Call to order the Elk Grove City Council Regular Meeting Wednesday, October 22, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Clerk?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, October 24 at 1:00 PM and Wednesday, October 29 at 9:00 AM on Metro Channel 14. Once posted, the recordings of this and previous meetings can be viewed on demand at www.ellgrove.gov or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide it to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Vice Mayor, I will be moving to the call to order. And starting with the roll call, I will start with Councilmember Spees. Councilmember Brewer.
Present.
Councilmember Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Robles.
Present.
And I will note that Mayor Singh Allen is absent.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And performing our land acknowledgements is going to be Councilmember Suen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We honor and respect and acknowledge that Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plains Miwok, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Ranchea Tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endured because of the bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
And we'll also be performing the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Spees, you lead us off.
All right. Andrew Hart, clear. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which we're founded, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This leads us to our moment in silence. And if you would please join me. And we will be going, Mr. Clerk, do we go to the approval of the agenda?
Approval of the agenda, indeed.
Perfect. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Clerk?
And all those in favor?
Aye.
And we have a unanimous 4-0. We can move on. That'll take us on to Section 3, our closed session. There are no closed session items on the regular agenda, which will take us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements, and that first item being item 4.1, which is a proclamation recognizing October 2025 as Hindu Heritage Month.
Okay. So it looks like I have that proclamation. And I'd like to ask that Hira Karan Kulkarni join us on the, on the, in front. So I want to thank you for being here tonight and Happy Diwali.
Happy Diwali to everyone.
It's like, one of the highlights during this period, obviously, as we're trying to have it festive and without bringing out light out of darkness, but also to bring joy to where there's pain. And the Peace Festival, it took place a couple of weeks ago, was very, was very fun, very inspirational, and I'm definitely, definitely glad that the city of Elk Grove played a part in that. And I want to thank you for putting it on through your foundation.
Thank you for supporting the event.
Thank you. We have a proclamation here for Hindu Heritage Month 2025, and I'll read off some of the whereas's for you, and then I'll, I'll bring it back to you to give a few words before we come down and take a picture. And so for this proclamation honoring Hindu Heritage Month 2025, whereas Hinduism is the third largest religion in the world, with more than 1 billion followers worldwide, including several million in the United States, and whereas the city of Elk Grove is home to a vibrant Hindu community who have made and are making remarkable contributions to our economy, in addition to the Hindu heritage, culture, traditions, and values have enriched our diverse city. And whereas Hindu Americans have made significant contributions all across all fields, including science, education, medicine, law, politics, business, culture, sports, and more, and whereas Hindu Heritage Month provides an opportunity to highlight Hindu culture and its diverse spiritual traditions rooted in India, which are practiced in many parts of the world, and whereas Hira Karan Kulkarni, an accomplished educator and musician with an extensive academic credentials from both India and the United States, including degrees in education, social work, and classical music of India, dedicated 20 years to teaching and serving students at the Elk Grove Unified School District, and whereas Hira has consistently promoted communal harmony and cultural understanding as a cultural ambassador since 1990 by organizing numerous events and offering free education programs such as tutoring and yoga classes to enrich the community with the music and culture of India. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Elk Grove recognizes and honors Hira Karan Kulkarni for her outstanding contributions to the community and extends greetings and best wishes to her and all individuals observing Hindu Heritage Month during the month of October 2025, signed on this day, October 22, 2025. Congratulations, and the floor is yours.
Thank you so much for this honor.
You have, you want to share more words or?
I would like to say a few things.
Yes, please.
Honorable Mayor Singh Allen, respected City Council members, and fellow residents of Elk Grove, Namaste and good evening. I am deeply honored and humbled to stand before you tonight to accept this proclamation for Hindu Heritage Month on behalf of our vibrant and dedicated Hindu community. For the past 35 years, Elk Grove has been my home, a place where I raised my family, served as an educator in the Elk Grove Unified School District, and witnessed our city grow into one of the high spirited communities in California. Over the years, through my work in our nonprofit organization, I have seen the incredible power of community, where people come together to help, to heal, and to celebrate one another. I have had the privilege to give back, where we award laptop scholarships through our nonprofit to homeless high school seniors from the Elk Grove Unified who are stepping into college. Our organization also strives to bring the world together through the International Peace Festival, as mentioned by Mr. Brewer, an event we proudly host each year on the Day of Nonviolence, which happens to be October 2. Tonight's proclamation holds profound meaning. It acknowledges a heritage that stretches back thousands of years, one that teaches peace through nonviolence, harmony through understanding, and joy through service. The timeless message of Vasudhaya Kutumbukam, which is a Sanskrit phrase, meaning the whole world is my family. It is just not a philosophy, it is a way of life. It reminds us that our duty is to care, to give, and to uplift one another. Hindu Americans across Elk Grove contribute each day to the city's success as teachers, business owners, professionals, volunteers, and public servants. Together, we share our traditions through festivals like Diwali, Holi, and Navaratri, not only as cultural celebrations, but as bridges of friendship and unity that connect all of us. I am sincerely grateful to the city of Elk Grove, to the mayor, the council, and the people for recognizing the Hindu Heritage Month. Your acknowledgement reaffirms the city's commitment to celebrating cultural diversity and honoring the faiths and tradition, traditions that make Elk Grove truly special. May this proclamation stand as a reminder that our shared strength lies in compassion, cooperation, and community spirit. Let us continue to build a city where every heritage is respected, every voice is valued, and every heart feels at home. Thank you for this great honor, and may peace and light guide us all. Om Sarve Bhavantu Sukhinaha, Sarve Santuni Ramayaaha, Sarve Badraani Vaschantu, Ma Kshet Dukkha Bhag Bhavet, Om Shantihi, Shantihi, Shantihi. This shloka represents a core teaching of compassion and selflessness, emphasizing that individual happiness is connected to the happiness of all. Thank you.
Please stick around, we'd like to take a picture with you.
So here, come on back, because we have to give you a proclamation.
Namaste. Darren, nice to meet you. Thank you. Namaste. Namaste. So nice to meet you. Nice to meet you again.
And here's your proclamation.
One, two, three. One more, just in case. One, two, three. Thank you.
My husband is taking one.
One more. Does your husband want to join? Yeah, you want to?
Hang on.
Would you like to be in?
No, no, thanks.
He's very shy.
Next item is 4.2, proclamation recognizing October 2025 as Filipino-American History Month, and that's going to be Councilmember Suen.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Can I have Ms. Joyce Mario Vito? Did I say that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Well, we just, we just honored a several thousand year old tradition, and now the Filipino community's been here for over several hundred years. It's my honor to honor the Filipino-American History Month for this month of October. It's a time to reflect on the richness of Filipino and Filipino-American history and culture, and to provide all Americans with the opportunity to learn, honor, and appreciate Filipino-American identity and their historic and social contributions to the fabric of the United States of America. And the earliest documented evidence of Filipinos in the continental United States occurred on October 18, 1587, where mariners under Spanish command referred to as Lazonas Indios landed in Morro Bay, California. And whereas today, the Filipino-American community is the second largest Asian-American group in California, and the 15,000-plus strong Filipino community plays a vital role in the city of Elk Grove's rich history. And Joyce Vito is a highly accomplished event planner with over 26 years of experience, known for her meticulous coordination and creative designs, and actively serves her community through organizations like the Philippine Day, National Day Association, fostering connections with heart and purpose. And Mario Vito Jr., known as DJ Mario V, has been bringing people together through music and service for over four decades, volunteering his talent and sound to countless cultural and civic events. And whereas Joyce and Mario Vito continue to uplift the Elk Grove community, embodying the spirit of service by consistently creating meaningful events that foster joy, connection, and a strong sense of belonging. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims October 2025 as Filipino-American History Month in the city of Elk Grove, and acknowledges the contributions of Joyce and Mario to the community, and encourages the community to celebrate, reflect, learn, honor, and appreciate Filipino-American identity and the historic and social contributions they made to the fabric of our community. Congratulations and Mubuhai. Would I say a few words?
Yes. This is going to come from the heart. Well, thank you, Councilmember Kevin Spees, Council, Councilmember Rod Brewer, Vice Mayor Sergio Robles, and Councilmember and friend Darren Suen. It is truly an honor to be up here in front of you and to receive this. It just brings light to everything that Joyce and I have really worked for, being part of our community, and being an example to our kids who, you know, we want to follow in our footsteps. I want to thank our family, our two daughters, Juliana and Jada, our parents, of course, and all our family and friends. Again, thank you from the bottom of my heart, and my wife Joyce.
Thank you. We'd like to come down to take a picture with you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. 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 I'll let you guys hold.
Oh, yes, get in here. Come on, daughters.
It's okay. Thank you. Three, one more time, one, two, three. Thank you.
You got to get everybody in here. Come on, guys, come on.
My parents are here.
Bring them all. Let's bring them all.
Those were my examples from the start.
Let them be right over here.
Yeah.
Lisa definitely have one.
Yeah, and my uncle.
Want to get it right over here?
Uncle Chris.
Chris.
Elaine.
Mateo.
Here we go. Ready? One, two, three. One more time. One, two, three. One, two, three. Chris, we need you in here.
Chris, we need you in here.
Come on. Come on, Ray.
If you didn't bring what you have on your shirt, though.
I know, I know.
Olympia.
Man, the big guy needs Olympia.
Wait, wait, wait. Sorry, can I just get one more person? My brother. Danny Gass.
Who else is hiding? Right in here.
He's stuck in the back.
We are the second largest population in California.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry.
You trying to pretend you're not, brother?
Yeah, yeah.
One, two, three. One more time. All right.
One more time. Don't go away yet. All right. One, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Yeah, congratulations. Have a good season. See you back soon. I'll be it.
Good evening. Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, Jason Berman, your City Manager. Always a great opportunity to come and present to you our new employees, well as those that are receiving promotions. So we're going to start with our Police Department Chief Bobby Davis.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. I am Bobby Davis, the Elk Grove Chief of Police, and I'm going to introduce our third quarter promotions and new hires. Dispatcher Ray Williams. Ray was born and raised in Galveston, Texas. Prior to joining the Elk Grove Police Department, Ray worked as a dispatcher in the Bay Area for five years. Most recently, she was a police dispatcher and trainer for San Mateo County Public Safety. Dispatcher Rachel Dale. Rachel was raised in Tracy prior to joining the Elk Grove Police Department. She was dispatcher for Turlock PD, who we've taken quite a few from. While away from work, Rachel enjoys reading, hiking, and swimming. Hey, what's going on? How are you? Officer Marco Gonzalez. Marco was born and raised in Sacramento. He completed his bachelor's degree in criminal justice at Cal State Sacramento. Prior to joining EGPD, Marco worked for Stockton PD for seven years. It's another trend. Yeah. Tyler was born and raised in Modesto. Prior to joining the Elk Grove Police Department, he worked for Modesto PD for four years. Away from work, Tyler enjoys cooking, barbecuing, and playing golf. Officer Kyle Wong, September 8, he started with us. Kyle was born in Monterey and raised in Stockton. He spent four years in the United States Marine Corps and graduated from Arizona State with a business degree. Prior to joining EGPD, go ahead, Carrie, you can say it. Prior to joining Elk Grove Police Department, Kyle worked for Stockton PD for approximately Remember doing the good stuff, huh? Yeah, okay. Captain Dan Templeton. Dan promoted on July 13. Dan joined Elk Grove Police Department November 7, 2010. Prior to his promotion, he was, he served as our lieutenant for our Employee Resources and Wellness Unit. Congratulations, Steve. Lieutenant Aaron Montgomery. Hey. Proud of you, proud of you. Aaron joined the Elk Grove Police Department on February 6, 2006. Prior to her promotions, she served as the Internal Affairs Sergeant in our Professional Standards Bureau. And a side note about Aaron, she's been on probation ever since 2006. Ashley was promoted on August 24 as well, but Ashley, in the last couple of years, has not only stepped up as a leader within our dispatch center, we had to talk her into trying to promote, and she finally chose to do it, but she's been Dispatcher of the Year. She has been a leader inside the dispatch center, and as everybody knows, it has grown so much in the last couple of years. Her leadership has really got us to where we are with the management team, and she has really stepped up. And so I want to say thank you for that and for sticking with us.
Thank you, Ashley.
That's all we have.
Welcome, congratulations, everybody.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Kara Reddick, Deputy City Manager. I am here with Femi Omo Teshu, who you all know. She recently advanced from Management Analyst 1 to Management Analyst 2. This is a well-deserved advancement for Femi. She mostly works on special projects in the City Manager's Office. She is really the heartbeat of our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Program, and she oversees the Youth Commission. So, thank you, Femi, for all you do.
Congratulations.
Good evening, City Council. Welcome, Mayor. I'm very happy to recognize Angie Mahill. She has advanced from Human Resources Analyst 1 to Analyst 2. Angie has more than seven years of public sector HR experience, including work with the city of Turlock and six years here with Elk Grove. Angie is currently responsible for managing complex leave programs and workers' compensation. She provides guidance and care to our employees and their families when they need it the most. This advancement is a well-deserved recognition of her professionalism, dedication, and the positive impact she continues to make on our agency.
Yeah. Congratulations.
I am also very excited to recognize Catherine Winkler, who has advanced from HR Analyst 1 to Analyst 2. Catherine brings nearly 15 years of comprehensive HR experience across state and local government, including the cities of Sacramento and Elk Grove. Over the past two and a half years with our city, she's been a key part of our HR team, managing payroll and benefits with exceptional accuracy, supporting our employees with care and ensuring compliance across all of our programs. Catherine's depth of knowledge, reliability, and commitment to excellence service make this advancement very well deserved.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am stepping in for our CIO, Nicole Gutrich, who is at our conference this week, so I'm going to be introducing two new IT staffs. So first, we have Joen Medina. He is an IT technician, and Joen has worked in IT support for the past 15 years. He's held roles as IT Regional Support Specialist at a managed service provider in Fremont, and Service Desk Specialist at a nonprofit in downtown Sacramento. Over time, he's developed a strong passion for solving technical problems and helping others, and he values every, treating every customer and colleague with respect, believing that professionalism begins with how we treat one another. Outside of work, Joen enjoys spending quality time with his wife and daughter, and together they love going on park picnics and taking short road trips whenever they get the chance.
Nice, welcome. Thanks for your help today.
I'd also like to introduce Timothy Tyren, IT analyst with over 15 years of experience in IT. Tim has worked across K-12 and higher education, supported clinical and nonclinical systems at two hospitals, and at a disaster recovery services data center, including server management. And most recently, he served at NOAA's Pacific Islands Fisheries Science Center in Oahu. He's a retired US Army Signals Intelligence Analyst and completed 24 years of service before retiring in 2009. He and his wife, Dawn, are celebrating their 39th wedding anniversary this year. Congratulations.
Wow, congratulations.
And they have one son, Andrew, who's age 25. And Tim's hobbies include spending time outdoors and digital nature photography. Welcome, Timothy.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Jeff Werner, your Public Works Director. The rest are mine, and I'm pleased to present to you first Destiny Bustos. She's a new hire in our Operations and Maintenance Team. She's a customer service representative. She joined our team recently and has graduated from Sacramento State, where she earned a degree in political science. And she has been a resident of Elk Grove for a few years and enjoys spending her free time with loved ones. Next is Mac McLean. Mac joins us from Toronto, Ontario, Canada. He has several years of engineering and project management experience in land development and has his bachelor's degree in civil engineering from the University of Ottawa. Mac's interests outside of work include the outdoors, fitness, and all sports, and I forgot to mention, he's an associate engineer in our CIP group.
Awesome. Welcome.
Mac is, I'm sorry. Next up is Trevor Pettigrew, new hire in Traffic Signal Technician 1 in our Streetlight and Traffic Signal Group. Trevor joined the city of Elk Grove in August as a traffic signal technician. He brings extensive experience in traffic signal systems, electrical construction, and public infrastructure. Trevor is dedicated to ensuring safe, efficient, and reliable signal operations throughout the city. And outside of work, Trevor enjoys climbing, running, and spending time with his two kids, and we recently golfed together, so I think he's getting into that, and he's pretty good. Next, we have Raymond Kong. Raymond is a senior civil engineer in our Drainage Engineering Group. He has over 15 years of engineering experience and comes to us from the city of Sacramento recently, where he spent seven years working on asset management, planning, design, and construction of drainage infrastructure, timely for tonight's presentation on flood protection. He is an alumni of UC Berkeley and is a resident of Elk Grove, and he enjoys woodworking and playing with his two sons. Happy to have him. All right. Next, we have our advancements. So first up is Jorge Lopez Tabadas. He's advancing from Maintenance Technician 1 to Maintenance Technician 2. He works in our drainage team, operating and maintaining our drainage systems. His current responsibilities include conducting closed circuit television inspections of our storm drain system, operating the VATCON truck to clean storm drain pipes, and performing minor repairs on catch basins. We're happy to see Jorge's progress and are encouraged by his willingness to improve and advance within the Drainage Maintenance Section. Congrats, man. Next is Freddie Sanchez. He's also advancing to Maintenance- He's also advancing to Maintenance Tech II in our Drainage Group. He has many years of experience in the private sector, doing pipeline inspection and utility markings, have proven beneficial in his current role maintaining Elk Grove storm drain systems. We are encouraged by his desire to improve procedures and his eagerness to advance within the Drainage Maintenance Section. Next, we have Samir Amin. He's also advancing. He's an engineering technician, so he's going from 1 to 2. He works on our capital maintenance team. He's out there helping preserve our pavements and our award-winning pavement management program. He is working on all aspects of our pavement program, from development and scoping of our projects to inspection and construction management. He's done a great job, and we look forward to his continued progress. Congrats. Next, we have Misha Perry, and this one's near and dear to my heart. Congratulations, Misha. She's promoting out from my team up to our CIP team as a Management Analyst. She started working for the city in 2011, beginning as a consultant, and in 2014 became a city employee. She's had a variety of roles across many departments throughout the city. She lives in Elk Grove with her family, and she remains committed to serving the community. And I'm looking forward to what she is going to bring to our capital improvement program. Thank you. Congratulations. And next, a very familiar face for everyone as well, Vanessa McGill. She's promoting to Management Analyst II. She's coming from our District 56 program and coming over to Public Works, and we're very happy to have her. She's been with the city for the past 10 years, or I'm sorry, 16 years, in the City Manager's Office for the past 10. She brings with her a wealth of city knowledge and experience and is eager to continue learning in her new role, supporting operations, particularly with our landscaping facilities and open spaces team. Congratulations.
Welcome, and congratulations, everyone.
All right. What a great group of new hires and promotions. Congratulations to everyone. Once again, let's give them all another round of applause. All right, that takes us now to public comment. I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. There are several people signed up to speak. And just as a reminder, I see a lot of new names, that we cannot take action on any public comment, so this is informational only. And you have three minutes to speak. We will start with Skylar Caspier, followed by Lynn Tebow.
Very nervous. Sorry about this. Recently, a business that's bordering my residence has changed their business plan. And in doing so, they've become very disruptive to my way of life. There are certain sounds in Elk Grove that are historic and resonate with me, the sounds of the train in Old Elk Grove and the PA system of the football games in Elk Grove High School. But now, all I hear every night is the loud drone of a sound system because an event center opened up in my backyard, and it's become a very big nuisance and has changed the entire existence of Old Elk Grove. And I spoke with Public Works... or not Public Works, I'm sorry. You guys were great. Thank you for fixing the street where PG&E messed it up. I wish they could do better. I spoke with planning, and it seemed that they don't have a conditional use permit. I have a case open with code enforcement, so I can hopefully get it streamed out. I hope that this business has to go through some of the same scrutiny that other businesses in Old Elk Grove have gone through. I had gotten a letter in the mail that a tattoo shop wanted to go into Old Elk Grove, and I know that a lot of businesses don't succeed there, and I hope that all businesses do, but not this one because of the disruption it's causing. With this conditional use permit, I've heard that there is times of service and stuff like that that would be limitations that they would have to follow. I hope that that makes things better if they are able to follow those. But I would like to see that other people could maybe speak and have this an agenda point at some point, if they go through the proper channels to get things above board. But right now, they are operating what it seems, from the general information that they could disclose when I reported it to them, that they are not operating with permission correctly. And so I just hope that all businesses in Old Elk Grove can follow the rules and regulations that you guys set. I know we're America, the land of the free, and we should be able to do everything we want, but I don't think that a business should change the way, especially our historic district is. And I would love to see more successful businesses go in there that are maybe more everyday businesses rather than, you know, salons. I'm glad the tattoo shop, I think, did get approved, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Feel free to follow up with me if you need additional information, but I think you're on the right track with code enforcement, so thank you. Next up is Lynn Tebow, followed by Nancy Miller.
Oh, my goodness. I'm really nervous about this. I have never been to a city council meeting, and it's nice to be here. Darren is my representative for my district. I grew up here, actually. I'm 81. I went to Elk Grove High School, graduated in 1962. It's always been a really lovely community. I went away for a number of years, have always been very politically active. I was part of the protest on Sunday, and I could not have been prouder of this community and the people that lived here. The reason I want to speak is to talk about the influx of ICE coming into communities and my great, great concern about the city of Elk Grove and how we are going to handle ICE coming into our community. I think, obviously, we have to follow the laws, but I've always felt such pride about our diversity, and I really want to see all of us, if ICE comes in here, to be out there in support of all of our immigrants and the people many of who've been living here for years and years and are our neighbors. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Lynn. There, if you go to our website, can one of our staff members direct Lynn to the website that has information? But there's some good information there for you. Next up is Nancy Millard, followed by Ellen Morales.
Good evening, and thank you for listening to the community and being open to what we have to share. I've been a member of the Elk Grove community for many years, and I just want to say, I want myself and my neighbors and my community to feel safe and respected, no matter what their background, no matter what their status. I have seen people dragged away before, and it's upsetting, not just to them, but to the whole community and everybody around them and the children in schools. And so I feel like this has been a healthy, responsive community, and I love to hear that, you know, the respect for the Filipino community and the Asian community. And this is what I love to see, the peace, the diversity, the sharing, the respect for one another. And I hope that this council and everybody in the community can work to help us all and the whole community, no matter what their culture, their status, their background, to feel not only safe but respected here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Eileen Morales, followed by John Pulskamp.
Hi there. My name is Ellen. I live in District 1, and I'm here to follow up on the public safety concerns that I raised at the September 10th council meeting. And I wanted to thank you, Mayor, for providing the link to the city's statement from February that highlights the values of diversity and compassion and adherence to state laws. While the statement makes clear that Elk Grove PD will follow the law and not collaborate with ICE, it doesn't specify how Elk Grove PD will respond when ICE or people impersonating ICE break the law in our community, as we have seen them do repeatedly around the country. For example, since the last time I spoke to the council, the following incidents have been documented around the country. A minister was shot in the head with pepper balls while peacefully protesting and praying. A military-style raid of an apartment complex, including helicopters, ransacking of homes and zip-tying of children took place. A woman was violently pulled from her car and arrested while picking up her children from school. Just today, we learned that federal agents violently dragged, picked up, and then dropped a blind man on his head, who was peacefully sitting outside of an ICE detention center. We know that ICE is detaining pregnant women, breaking a Biden-era policy that says no pregnant, nursing, or postpartum person should be held in detention. Additionally, ProPublica has been tracking the number of U.S. citizens detained by ICE. Now it's more than 170 cases. Among them were nearly 20 children. There are also documented cases of people impersonating ICE officers for the purpose of rape and assault. A man impersonating an ICE agent forced a 51-year-old Latina woman in Brooklyn into a stairwell, where he punched her, attempted to rape her, and then robbed her. In South Carolina, a man was charged with kidnapping and impersonating an ICE agent after detaining a group of Latino men. If someone is trying to arrest me, but won't provide a badge, an ID, won't show their face, will not provide a judicial warrant, and is just wearing an ICE vest that he could have purchased off Amazon, how am I supposed to know the difference between a criminal who is attempting to human traffic or rape me and a legitimate law enforcement officer? These examples demonstrate to me that ICE continues to escalate its violent and often illegal tactics, and that no community member is safe. And today, we learned, as reported by the San Francisco Chronicle, that at least 100 ICE and CBP agents will be arriving in the Bay Area starting tomorrow, and raids are expected for the foreseeable future in cities within 40 miles out from the Bay. I urge the city and its sworn police officers to protect the people in our city at all costs, and I implore you to take proactive, transparent, and immediate actions to more clearly define and make known to residents how you expect our city police officers to handle ICE and Border Patrol agents who are acting with excessive force and outside of the law. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ellen. Next up is John Pulskamp, followed by Shelley Miller. If we can keep the applause, please. So, thank you.
Looks like you're taking care of things, so if you'd like, I can also give you a microphone.
I'm fine. I can stand. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is John Pulskamp. I'm a relatively new resident of Elk Grove. I moved here from Los Angeles, where my family had lived since just after the Civil War, and I really like the city. It's a beautiful place, and one of the things I especially enjoy is the ethnic and racial makeup of the city. It's great to have that. But what the last two speakers were talking about is what I want to talk about. We talk about public safety, where we need to count on our law enforcement people to support us and protect us. And when I was 20 years old, I was arrested for... it turned out, they wouldn't tell me what it was initially. It turned out to be a murder, and I was locked in a cell for three days. And most of the time, other than the first hour, I was in there by myself, where I couldn't see any other prisoners. And at the time, I was in the process of becoming a policeman, and in those days, it was policeman and policewoman, not police officer. Of course, I changed my mind later, but it left an indelible mark on my spirit. To this very day, I suffer fear and tension just to see a policeman anywhere around me. I'll be 83 in less than two weeks, and that was when I was 20. Can you imagine what it's like for a 10- or 12- or 15-year-old kid to watch his parents get locked up and maybe never seen again, or for he himself, he or she themselves, to get locked up for two or three days, two or three weeks, two or three months? Who knows? That is going to create a public safety issue in the future because there's a big difference between fear and respect. And it's hard, if you're afraid of law enforcement, to always respect them, and that's going to come back to bite us. Anyway, I want to hope that Elk Grove Police will protect us from these government-sanctioned kidnappings, which is exactly what it is. And I don't really understand why other local law enforcement agencies, police, and Sheriff's Department haven't arrested any of these people. There were no badges, no uniforms, no ID or anything else. I hope that we can keep Elk Grove safe that way, and so far, there's been very little activity along those lines here, but it won't remain that way, I'm afraid. Anyway, thank you for your time, and that's a major concern of mine.
Thank you, John. Can we have order in the chambers, please? Thank you. Next up is Shelley Miller, followed by Zell Lee.
Good evening. This is my first time here. My name is Shelley Miller, a 52-year resident of Elk Grove, a local mother, grandmother, and teacher. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. We are at a pivotal moment in our community's history, a time when the choices we make will echo far beyond this room. I'm here to urge the Elk Grove Police Department to take a stand against assisting ICE. ICE's presence in our community creates fear, and this fear does not only affect immigrants. Local police officers are not immigration agents. They are community officers, here to protect all citizens and residents. If local law enforcement assists ICE, they turn away from their role as protectors and become enforcers of a system that often ignores due process and the rule of law. The shame of collaborating with an unjust system is not new in Elk Grove's history. During World War II, the Japanese-American community was forcibly removed from their homes and sent to internment camps, simply because of their ethnicity. They were treated as enemies, their lives torn apart by government actions based on fear and prejudice. The parallels are undeniable. This kind of treatment has no place in Elk Grove. Our city is safer when law enforcement focuses on real threats to public safety. I ask Elk Grove Police Department to protect all of us, to not break up families nor create fear. I urge you to stand with families who deserve to feel safe in and out of their homes. Let ours be a compassionate community where people live with dignity and peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Zell Lee, followed by Clara Patterson.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
I've been here before, and I am a proud citizen of Elk Grove since 2002. My parents were born and raised in California, as well as myself. I'm even a proud member of Elk Grove Core 101. My complaint concern is the... I'm looking for the right word. I live between Bruceville and Franklin Boulevard. I have made many complaints about the graffiti on the bus stop. They told me to contact Sacramento RT. I've done that. That's been over a month, and now I'm noticing that there's a bus stop with glass scattered on the sidewalk on Bruceville and Franklin. And I'm also happy to know that we have... And I'm also happy to know that we have new police officers coming in to join our beautiful staff that's here already. Because with this new apartment building coming up, we're gonna need that. I don't want us to be so blindsided to not recognize that things will be changing, and they're not gonna be for the good. Because it's already happening where I live at. Oh, I've called, I've gone on City Slick, I've left emails. Oh, I'm just wondering, how much longer will this graffiti and glass be not addressed? Oh, I don't know whether I get comment or a response, or who else should I contact to find out?
I'll direct you to staff, ma'am, after the comments, but we can't engage here.
Okay.
Thank you for sharing.
All right, thank you.
Can we get one staff member to follow up? Thank you. Christopher Jordan will meet you. Next up is Clara Patterson, followed by Mark White as our final speaker.
First time. Good evening, Ms. Mayor, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor Robles, and good evening, my fellow citizens. My name is Clara Cervantes Patterson, and I'm here to exercise my First Amendment and speak about the upcoming ICE that's gonna be coming in our town. I fell asleep at the wheel. I'm retired. I should know better. I don't know if it was approved already that they're gonna be in Elk Grove. But I am totally against them being in our town. I think the Elk Grove PD is doing a great job in our little comfy town. And I am a proud daughter of immigrants. And I feel safe in Elk Grove. It's a lovely little town. I love the trails, the parks, everything in it. And I, you know, this is just... We all know what's going on. And I disagree with what's happening in our country right now. And I don't want to see any of that violence in this town. It's too much. It's too much. I think Elk Grove PD is doing a good job as sheriffs. I am sorry to see the situation of things right now. So, I'll make it short and sweet. I hope you all vote against it. I hope Elk Grove PD, like the previous speaker said, does not engage and keeps doing what they're professionals at. And good luck, Elk Grove. Thank you all, especially Elk Grove PD. Doing a good job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Clara. Next up, and our final speaker, is Mark White.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. So, I'm just... 25 years ago, we moved here to the rural area of Elk Grove. And we love it out there. And at that time, the general plan came up, and the maintenance of the preservation of the rural area was important. And it still has been since that time. Now we're finding that there's a proposal for a special planning area out there to carve out a little area, the rural area, and turn it into high-density housing. I know you can't do anything tonight, but all I'm asking you guys is to honor the commitment of the past councils to the residents in the rural area. It's a unique part of the city that I think needs to be maintained, because... And you can go into any city and you see houses everywhere. That's, you know, that's not what it's all about. So I'm just asking you, as that proposal comes up, take a good look. Because it's their right to do that. They own the property. But just like you to maintain or honor the commitment of the past councils. That's it. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. I will go ahead and close public comment. That was our final speaker. And because we did have a number of new speakers, please visit the Elk Grove City website. It will address many of your questions and comments this evening. It's very thorough. It's very robust. And otherwise, feel free to contact any one of us. My cellphone is also listed. Happy to have a conversation. But because there was a number of folks speaking on a similar subject, please visit the website and get the information that you need. And you'll be happy to know that Elk Grove is a beautifully diverse city, a city welcome to all. Thank you. With that, we will move on to our next item, which is item number six, our city manager's report.
All right. Happy to report on several items this evening. First of all, happy to report that all lanes of Franklin Boulevard, between Oak Grove Boulevard and Laguna Boulevard, have reopened. Work on the Harvest Water Project is finally clearing in that area. There will be some intermittent lane closures with flaggers in place. Should continue into November with some median restoration, road resurfacing, and striping. Work also continues south of Elk Grove, with major pipeline construction expected to be complete by early 26. More information is on the SACHarvestWater.org website. We challenge residents to capture the people, places, and moments that make Elk Grove special. Now it's time to choose the favorites. Public voting is now open at elkgrove.gov/fotocontest through Sunday, October 26. Choose your favorite. Among the finalists in three categories, youth, professional, and amateur, finalist work will be on display at the Elk Grove Fine Arts Center during a celebratory reception on November 8. The Police Department and Explore Elk Grove will host the very popular Hallow Palooza and Trunk or Treat, which is a family-friendly Halloween celebration at District 56 this Friday, October 24, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Activities will include trunk-or-treating, DJ dance party, costume contests, and more. Hallow Palooza is free. It's an event for the whole family. Please visit Explore Elk Grove website for more details. City and the Wilton Rancheria will celebrate Native American Heritage Month with historic firsts this year. The city and tribal leaders will host a public flag-raising ceremony in front of City Hall on Monday, November 3, at 10:00 a.m. City Council, as you recall, amended the flag policy earlier this year to include the tribal flag as a way of honoring the tribe's sovereignty, deep connection, and ongoing contributions to the Elk Grove community. Once installed, the tribal flag will permanently accompany the flags of the United States, State of California, and the city of Elk Grove. And it's one of the only ones across the country doing something similar. City facilities are dropbox locations for the 2025 statewide special election. Voters can drop off completed ballots at City Hall or at the center of District 56 through Election Day on Tuesday, November 4. For a full listing of SAC County Vote Centers and ballot dropbox locations, visit elections.saccounty.net. And finally, in accordance with the city holiday schedule, City Hall will be closed on Tuesday, November 11, in observance of Veterans Day. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions the council might have.
All right. Thank you for your report. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you. We will move on to our next item, which is our consent calendar items.
Move consent. Second.
Let me open it up. No public comments. I opened it. I'm now closing it. We have nobody signed up. Now I will take your motion.
Okay. Now I'll move. And I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is item 8.1.
Item 8.1 wants a public hearing to consider the reissuance of bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority in support of the Poppy Grove 1, 2, and 3 projects.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, members of the city council. Tonight's item is a public hearing required under the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TEFRA. TEFRA requires a public hearing be held by the elected governing body where a project is located when taxes and bonds are being proposed, and that the elected governing body must approve the proposed financing. The project under consideration is the Poppy Grove Affordable Housing Development, also known as the Most Apartments, which was completed in 2025 earlier this year. The development is structured as three distinct phases, each individually owned and operated as standalone projects. Project 1 contains 147 units located at 10129 Bruceville Road, owned and operated by Poppy Grove 1 LP. Project 2 contains 82 units located at 10139 Bruceville Road, owned and operated by Poppy Grove 2 LP. And Project 3 contains 157 units located at 10149 Bruceville Road, owned and operated by Poppy Grove 3 LP. Together, these projects provide 384 affordable units, serving households earning 30% to 80% of the area median income. The projects are jointly managed, and tenants have shared access to all residential amenities. In 2022, council held TEFRA hearings approving the original bond issuance that led to the construction of all three phases. But at this time, the project's sponsor seeks to make modifications to the original bond terms, specifically to delay the date in which the bonds convert from construction financing to permanent financing. Because this technicality occurred outside of the initial three-year period, a new TEFRA hearing and council approvals are required. So just to be clear, there is no new debt to be incurred as part of this reissuance, and there are no other changes to the project or the ownership entities, respectively. Accordingly, the owners have asked that the California Municipal Finance Authority, or CMFA, serve as the conduit issuer of the bonds. CMFA will reissue the following amounts: Bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $60 million, originally issued to finance Project 1; Bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $40 million, originally issued to finance Project 2; and Bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $70 million, originally issued to finance Project 3. The total principal amount of bonds to be reissued will not exceed $170 million. The debt to be reissued will be the responsibility of the owners paid from revenues pledged by the projects. The city will bear no liability or responsibility to repay the bond indebtedness. Bond offering documents will have clear disclaimers noting that this is not an obligation of the city. And finally, the affordability restrictions will continue to remain in effect, restricting 100% of the units as affordable, with the exception of three mandatory units. Accordingly, staff's recommendation is that the city council adopt a resolution approving the reissuance of bonds by CMFA for the benefit of the projects. This concludes my presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions. And we also have a representative from CMFA to answer any questions on behalf of the project sponsor.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not have anyone sign up to speak. I'll close public comment and declare that the public hearing is now closed. Any questions or comments? If not, I will look for a motion.
Mayor, a couple of questions. Thank you. I was wondering why the delay that's forcing this rehearing.
CMFA has informed staff that the project did not meet the initial conversion date, likely due to construction delays, which is not necessarily uncommon among larger affordable housing projects. This delay essentially pushed out the schedule.
And then, so what happens if this isn't approved?
I'm gonna pass it to Sarah.
So it does create some pretty serious implications for the project. What would happen is that the project would lose its tax-exent status, which would likely lead to the investor backing out of the project. The project could end up going through foreclosure. Currently, the project is mostly leased. And so if there were a foreclosure, we risk the project converting to a market-rate project, which would displace many of the current tenants.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. This is obviously a project that I... It was frustrating when this originally came forward and the amount of changes that happened, knowing that our staff had to help with performas and things that are clearly the responsibility of the owner, the business owner. And then to have the designs changed on us at the last minute, to take away balconies and patios. And so those are... To see this again, to come back and have to ask for a request for this is... Again, it's also frustrating, but I wanted to hear, I wanted the public to hear the explanation. So I'll be supporting this item tonight, but, you know, it is... My frustration over the ownership entities and what I feel is just a lack of concern for the communities that they are doing business in. I can't understate that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Worsun, for raising some valid questions and concerns. Any other questions, comments? Looking to the right, looking to the left. All right. Seeing none, I will look for a motion.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. Okay, thank you. We will go ahead and move to our next item.
Item 8.2 is a public hearing to consider ordinance adopted by reference to 2025 California Building Standards Code with local amendments and amending various sections of Title 16 to buildings in construction under the Elk Grove Municipal Code, and also amending Chapter 17.04 relating to the California Fire Code.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Brian Franger, City of Elk Grove building official. Thank you for the opportunity to present the ordinance for adoption of the 2025 California Codes. California has completed the triennial review and approved the new addition of the California Building Standards Codes to go into effect January 1, 2026. The building codes consist of 10 parts from the Title 24 California Code Regulations. And what you see here are the municipal code sections that we are proposing to modify to reference the new codes to be enforced. This slide represents the timeline for the code adoption process that includes the Building Standards Commission, first and second reading, and effective code date. Adopting these codes helps protect life and property, supports innovation in design, and aids our building staff in applying consistent, updated standards. It also gives our local economy certainty, so architects, engineers, and contractors know the rules they must follow. There are some new code items that are worth noting. The first item is electric vehicle charging. The codes continue to expand the mandatory requirements for EV charging infrastructure in new residential construction, including multifamily dwellings and hotels. The second item is electric-ready buildings. And to promote the shift away from fossil fuels, the code encourages electric-ready buildings. And this means new construction must have the necessary electrical capacity to accommodate current and future installations of electrical appliances for heating, cooking, as well as water heating. And last is bicycle parking for non-residential construction. This is an increase from the short-term bike parking percentage, based on 20% of visitors, and long-lasting, or sorry, long-term bike parking increase to 10%. Additionally, there are a couple new fire code items that have been identified. The fire code will allow for partially sprinklered buildings for energy storage, as well as distilled spirits and wine facilities. There's also a new chapter that has been added to the fire code for temporary cooking and heating, as well as regulations for rooftop storage and hazardous material. Finally, I want to emphasize that the adoption of this code is forward-looking. While we commit to align with the 2025 codes, this action does not preclude us from future adjustments, refinements, or more targeted amendments as new technologies and industry practices evolve. I respectfully recommend that the council approve the ordinance adopting the 2025 California Building Standards Codes with the proposed local amendments, assuring that our community continues to build safely and resiliently into the future. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I will declare the public hearing is now open and open up public comment opportunity. I do not see anyone sign up to speak. I'll close public comment and declare the public hearing is now closed. Before I turn it over to colleagues, for you, Brian, I did meet with a stakeholder group, and there's a number of questions that I just want entered into the record. And then, if you can address them, and then I'll open it up to my colleagues here. So there's five questions. When California neighboring jurisdictions are all willing to move to a temporary or permanent water supply, why would we be the only jurisdiction to still require permanent? That's question one. Question two: Why do other districts and the state feel comfortable with temporary water supplies? Number three: In circumstances where structures under construction caught fire and were not saved while a temporary water source was on site, do we know the water supply was the issue? Or were there other factors that played a role in the inability to save the structure? I know there's a lot going on, and I'll repeat any of them if you want. Fourth question: Is it likely that builders would be resistant to ensuring that an adequate temporary water supply is present in order to save the structure they have dedicated time and resources to constructing? And final question: Under the exemption language, how is that administered? And how can builders trust there will be consistent... And how can builders trust there will be consistency and equitable use of exemptions? Under what circumstances would an exemption not be granted? And I can repeat any of them. I know there was a lot, but they're similar themes.
So in an effort to assist with that, we've invited Chief Ray to assist with the questions regarding water supply.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
I may need your assistance on repeating a couple of those.
Okay, happy to.
You want to go one by one, or how would you like to handle it?
Okay, yeah, sure. If you're gonna be answering all of those, I will go with question one. When California and neighboring jurisdictions are all willing to move to a temporary or permanent water supply, why would we be the only jurisdiction to still require permanent?
The only jurisdiction I'm aware of in this county that is moving to that is Sacramento Metropolitan. The other three fire agencies continue to have the standards put in place in this community in nineteen ninety-two. So we have maintained this since nineteen ninety-two, and we plan to in the future if adopted tonight.
Okay, so this would be stronger than the state code?
It is, yes. It is. It is stronger than the state code and has been for many years.
Okay. Question two, why do other districts and the state feel comfortable with temporary water supplies?
I wouldn't know how to answer that one.
Okay, fair enough. In circumstances where structures under construction caught fire and were not saved while a temporary water source was on site, do we know the water supply was the issue? Or were there other factors that played a role in the inability to save the structure?
There are always other factors. We don't know in this area because all four of the major fire agencies have had the same requirement since at least two thousand and four. So at least twenty years. And so I wouldn't be able to speak to the theoretical of why, but I can tell you, we have had the same issues. We have had construction sites burn in this county and nearby. Every single one of them has had a permanent water supply available or some sort of alternative means and methods established that allowed the builder to move forward without that permanent water supply in place yet. So I apologize for not being able to answer that one.
Okay, that's okay. Let's see. Is it likely that builders would be resistant to ensuring that an adequate temporary water supply is present in order to save the structure they have dedicated time and resources to constructing?
I think it's fair to say that, no, they would likely be very receptive to a temporary water supply to save their investment. It is very costly. I have had experience in construction fires. It takes many months for them to demolish, including the foundation based on the heat, and rebuild their projects. It can cost them tens of thousands of dollars, and we certainly don't want that. So yes, I think they would be open to that.
Okay, in my, let's see here. Under the exemption language, how is that administered? And how can builders trust that there will be consistency and equitable use of the exemptions? And then, under what circumstances would an exemption not be granted?
So the exemption that is currently in place now requires the permanent water supply. There are a couple of exceptions for rural communities. In this code cycle, we are adding implicitly model home complexes to give the ability for model home complexes to build. How it can be ensured that it would be used equitively, I think, is the question. That is our practice here. The building official and his division and CJ and community development, we do this often. So the area, for example, that is south of Fire Station Seventy-seven, so Kylie, that developed with temporary water supply as a established plan. It was approved by the fire department, not by right per code, but approved by the fire department and the building code, or the building department, and we created a phased approach, and we do this often. So it's something that we deal with all the time. And then, could you repeat the last portion of the question? I apologize.
Yeah, it was a two-part question. So the last part was, under what circumstances would an exemption not be granted?
Yeah, so it'd be almost implicitly when there's an exposure, where we feel that the construction of a large building, if you were to look at, say, the project you just talked about, a four-story apartment complex built near a property line, we would not want that to happen because of the exposures it could have for our neighbors. So that project in particular also had an exemption where they were able to build at the north end of the property because there were no exposures, but as you move to the south on that part of the property, you do get near neighborhoods. So we face it. So we have routinely and consistently looked for solutions in this community and the entire district, and we would continue to do that.
Thank you. I'll go to my left here. Questions, comments? Councilmember Suen?
So thank you for being here. So I was curious, when you talk about model homes, and I'm talking about single-family residential that is, you know, separate construction, right, not attached. Oftentimes, those are built, you know, away from everything. In those instances, why would you not, why would that not qualify for an exemption?
That will. So we have done in the past using the language as a rural community. In this code adoption cycle, we implicitly called out model home complexes to make sure that there was no confusion. So we do that often, and we will continue to do that in the future.
Okay. And then, are you familiar with a different policy that's going through the... You mentioned only one Sac Metro.
Yeah.
But do you, my understanding is that may be percolating throughout the region? Is that...
Very possible. We, the City of Elk Grove is at the front end of the code adoption. The other fire agencies are gonna be behind us slightly, so this may be going on in other fire agencies as well. As of right now, the only one I'm aware of that has agreed to do that is Sac Metro. I did speak to the fire marshals of Folsom and the City of Sacramento here in the last twenty-four hours, and they had not heard of it. So it's still relatively new.
Okay. And is there some deadline or driving force that this needs to be, a sense of urgency that this needs to be adopted today?
I'd be happy to answer that.
I'm gonna address that a little bit. So as the council may know, the state codes go into effect every three years. So the deadline, if nothing happens, is they would go into effect the first of the year, January first, two thousand and twenty-six. And so that's why we go through this exercise every three years and make local exceptions based on certain findings, topography, that sort of thing. Tonight would be the last night to do the first read of the ordinance. The second read would be November twelfth, and then the ordinance is typically effective thirty days later. So it's a little bit before January first. We've made the ordinance effective January first. So my recommendation to the council, even if you have some concerns, I understand that the CSD board is gonna take a look at this as well. Tell me if I'm wrong, chief, but go ahead and do your first read tonight. If there is a desire by the council later, we should be able to amend the code. I need to firm up that research, but I'm fairly confident that we could do that later. But if you don't take action tonight, you'll miss the window to adopt the code for the January first, two thousand and twenty-six deadline.
Okay. So, yeah, and I was trying to go the other way, is if things could change, would we want to adopt tonight only to change, you know, later on? But it sounds like we can change at the second reading.
Well, you can't, well, you can't quite change it at the second reading. As the council knows, this would be the first read tonight, and you can't make change between first and second reading. If you decided to make changes at second read, that effectively becomes your first reading.
Right.
And then the code goes into effect thirty days after the second reading. Thinking kind of forward, our next meeting after the twelfth would be first meeting in December, whatever date that is. And then you'd miss a thirty-day window. So you're gonna have a period of time where the state codes, the default state codes went into effect. So again, my recommendation would be go ahead and do the first read tonight. If you decide later to make a change, we should be able to do that. You don't really want to have a gap in between the first of the year and the effective date of your new code. You want to kind of close that up. And this is one issue of many in the state codes. The uniform codes are very comprehensive, as the council knows. And so you're gonna want to get your local amendments adopted sooner rather than later. If this is the only issue, the fire suppression issue, the water supply issue, we should be able to tweak that later if that's a desire of the council, and the CSD board may have an opinion on it as well.
What it may, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to clarify that I work for the CSD, obviously, and we had our first reading, and then this issue was identified. So we have moved to pass the first reading. Our second reading is scheduled for, I believe, the fifth of November. We tried to overlap them because it's a compressed schedule. So I'm not certain the direction that my board would choose to go if they choose to make changes at all.
So, Councilmember Suen, just as sort of an overarching concern in the council, and you have heard this from before, it's not great practice to try to revise the codes on the fly at the council meeting here. If there are some considerations the council wants staff to take and look at some potential changes, my recommendation is, again, go ahead and do your first read tonight. The ordinance wouldn't be effective anyways. You could always change it later if you wanted to. And if you wanted to direct staff and ask the CSD staff to look at these as well with the city staff, we could do that. And then we could give you some further information coming back at the next meeting. But again, my recommendation, which is the same as staff's, is go and do the first read tonight. There's really no downside to doing that, and there's a downside to not doing it.
Yeah, and to clarify, I mean, I had no concerns over the rest of the whole item. It's just, would it make sense to do the first read and continue the temporary water issue? Or can, do you not, you don't even want to parcel it out that way?
I wouldn't do it that way. Just go ahead and do the first read. If the direction of the council is that staff in coordination with CSD Fire go back and take a look at the water supply, water suppression issue, go ahead and give us that direction.
Okay.
Keep in mind that the downside to that is you may have a situation where your local codes don't go into effect the first of the year, and at least with the fire suppression issue. And you may have a situation where the, where there's a gap. So even if you knew you were gonna make this change later, my recommendation would be do the first read tonight, second read at the next meeting, and then direct staff to bring back another local ordinance amendment a little later. But there's gonna be a period where the fire suppression ordinance with the water supply issue is going to be in effect. And I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. That's ultimately a policy decision for the council, though.
Yeah, okay. All right.
That makes sense?
Yep, makes sense. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Great questions. Councilor Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for bringing up a lot of those concerns. I did have just one quick question, is if the permanent water supply is not being available, does that delay the project?
It can, yeah.
By how many, just depending on when the water is available, or is it, sort of talking weeks, months, or just...
So water in our county is typically administered through a variety of agencies, and so, yes, it absolutely can. It's one of the things that, that's why we often work with our developers on temporary solutions to get them where they need to go, phased development. But yeah, it's fair to say that.
And then, thank you, John, for bringing up what you mentioned. I'm comfortable with trying to do something where we can amend it later on, solve that fix as well, so.
Councilmember Brewer?
So, no, I definitely thank the council for their consideration and some of the points that they've raised and questions. Because as we, because as you're trying to develop a new regulation, a new policy in place, you want to make sure you're doing it with all parties involved and everybody providing the input that's necessary to give you something that will work. And so looking at, looking at the consideration for the first reading and the second reading, my question is, is there a drawback to applying or using the state fire code language? And what are the drawbacks to that?
There are. I haven't had an opportunity to explain this to my board of directors. This is my opinion as the fire marshal. And so state fire code language gives exceptions to reduce the amount of water supply required based on its proximity to the property line. And so there's a variety of ways that that's done. And then, water supply is calculated based on construction type, height, mass, all of those things. So you have a very large building, again, the reference to the four-story apartment complex that's built out of wood. It could be very close to the property line. We're a community, and this is my opinion, that does infill development. This is, the state code is the minimum in the state of California. Our amendments have been put in place based on our, the challenges we face in this community, and that's one of them. We build larger buildings adjacent to existing residential. Hence the reason that when these... So I should back up to give the council a little bit. There was a conversation between some representatives and myself. Prior to this, it wasn't clear they wanted to go to the state code. I thought it was a model home complex issue, hence the change we made. And then this came up. So we've been working with them on it. It just wasn't clarified. And so we thought we had addressed the issues. We, I, as the fire marshal, recommend that we do not do this for multifamily specifically. That is my concern. As Councilman Suen indicated, single-family homes, I think there's some room to work there, but reversion to the state code would give it for all projects. Buildings like Kubota, buildings like large hotels.
And council, if I could jump in for a minute, we certainly are seeing more single-family product within denser neighborhoods, where those separations get smaller, certainly. I've been involved with projects that have had fire issues happen during their construction. We have minimal if no setbacks. And in those cases, when you don't have the onsite water, it does create a challenge for the fire department in order to deal with those. As the chief mentioned, there are alternative means and methods that they can go through and propose alternatives. I can speak to chief and his team's ability to work with both the city and with applicants to resolve those on a case-by-case basis, to try to achieve the schedules. So having a blanket that prefers back to the state code exclusively, without the ability to look at those local contexts, to raise the standard back up, is going to, I think, be a problem for us as a community overall. And instead saying, look, our standard is here, but we're willing to consider exceptions or deviations based upon the immediate context, or maybe your construction methodology or other factors. The language is still there in what we're proposing and what we've historically done to come down from what is the base standard. But we always have that to fall back on of, let's make sure you have that water availability in order to fight this issue should it arise. So I think it's the way the code's been presented and the way we've had it for the last several decades, to the chief's point, has been in the best interest of the community and something staff's recommending we continue for now. We can continue to explore this and more, both with CSD staff and with the BIA and there are others, other folks that are interested across the development community. And if there's likelihood or need to bring something back, we can do that at a later date, to John's point.
Well, Mr. Jordan, because and I definitely appreciate everything that you and your team do, does that CSD Fire Chief Ray, that, believe me. One thing I was looking at in this whole dynamic, because we see that the southeast policy area is still growing, and the new homes that are coming in, the density of the infill. We see some that are normal-sized, single-family homes, then you see some that are a little closer. And that's where, in terms of projects, making sure the projects read the right, meet the right timelines, but also meet the right specifications. And that's where we're looking at the whole aspect of the water supply, whether it be temporary or permanent. That's where I was trying to figure out what the pros and cons are on that to help gain better understanding of having a policy that can be effective for this window. And as we go through the process, through the second reading and the third reading after tonight, is where can we find common ground from all those stakeholders to help craft something that will benefit Elk Grove, but also be something that is going to meet the standard, so to speak?
Yeah, to be fair to our friends in the development industry, like, the state code does have provisions. So like, if you're a certain distance from the property line, you're required to do full fire flow. So you actually wouldn't get an exception. It's, again, to the city attorney's point, we don't want to craft policy on the fly. A policy about temporary water supply would be where I will be recommending to the board that I work for. So that's, and we coordinate on policy between the district and the development CJ's group often. So that's the desire, but again, we are in a very, I have not had this happen. This is my fifth code adoption or sixth. Only got three more left. So I haven't had this happen in between the first and second reading, so I apologize for not having a little bit more knowledge. It just doesn't happen very often.
No, that's perfectly understandable, chief. I mean, something of this nature, normally in the past, these are like slam dunks. And they're pretty, pretty simple teamwork across the board. Everybody's participating.
This is unique.
But as we look at, well, Mr. CSD, but looking at the upcoming landscape for the SEPA and the livable employment area, we're seeing homes that are being built, and they're being built in a lot of different shapes, in a lot of different neighborhoods. and they're being built in a lot of different shapes, and a lot of different neighborhoods being coming together, coming together pretty uniquely as well. And that's where, maybe in this case, maybe we want to keep the consistency, or we look at something that can allow us to fulfill the water needs for now. And as things become more stayed, we can pretty much figure out how to move forward from there, and whether we want to go back to those higher standards, or stay the, stay the course based on what we've, what we learned from this. But, but yeah, those are the things that I, that I was asking. Definitely appreciate the work that, that you and Mr. Franger and Mr. Jordan and Mr. Hobbs have put together over the last few weeks, because this is not an easy process. Just in the past, we're used to seeing, because a lot of projects have not, were not in play. Now we have projects that are in play, and we have future projects coming up. So, and that's where a lot of things have to be put in full weight and consideration. But thank you again. Really appreciate you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spees?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, so first, chief, you know, I think a lot of folks, why are we even arguing about this type of thing, right? But I think we also need to put it in a, in a bigger context, right? There were, there have been instances in the past where cities and counties have overlooked what they felt was important, or have not lived up to what the public expected in terms of professionalism. I think most of us can remember the Ghost Ship, which was absolutely horrible. Many people died. And more recently, we can remember Espardo, where unfortunately, many other people died, simply because the problem was pushed under the rug. And so I want to thank you very much for, first, having, I strongly respect you as, as a fire marshal, as a fire professional, and understanding things. And so it's difficult for me to sit here and question, right? So, but also, you know, for, for saying, look, I think this is the standard that it needs to be, and holding your position. I strongly appreciate that. I do think that we need to think about this one a little bit more, like to kind of push back a little bit and say, is there a way that we can, we can do this? Just out of curiosity, it's probably a little bit of a lever, level lower than, that I should probably ask. Nobody, everybody wants to know how the sausage is made, but nobody wants to see, you know, or what is it? Everybody wants to know how the sausage is made until they see it happen, right? But can you tell me about, is there a formula of how many gallons of water one needs for, per square foot of combustible materials? Is it that simple, or?
No.
It would be nice if it was that simple, right?
Yeah, it would. And to be honest, on the spot, because I've applied the same standard here that the permanent water supply, there may be a, that I'm not aware of.
Sure.
I don't believe there is. It's based on minimum gallons per water for a single-family home typically is going to be around 1,500 to 3,000 gallons per minute. The water supply in this community is fantastic. So our permanent water supply meets and exceeds that by significant measure. And so we are always looking at, will it overwhelm our services? That's the evaluation we make when we make these temporary water, alternative means and methods requests. That is the way we do business now, based on the individual situation, because we have to evaluate what's around. Is it a single-family home? Is it a row of them? Is it 10 of them? Is it an apartment complex? Is it a large warehouse? It varies dramatically. So it's something that I'm not necessarily, can't give you a direct answer.
Sure, right.
If this council, the CSD board, other elected officials choose to go that way, it's certainly something I'll work to develop.
Okay.
But I don't believe we have something that I could just turn over to you today.
Sure, okay.
All right, Mayor.
So I have a, I have a follow-up. Go ahead.
Yeah, well, I, you go ahead with your follow-up. I had a comment when you're done.
Okay. Has the county taken a position?
Not formally. I know that historically, how this has worked is the four fire agencies would get together and develop an ordinance. That ordinance would be led by SAC Metro through the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. They're the same ordinance in almost all respects, and so they would move forward. With the change at SAC Metro, it's uncertain about the county as a whole. So I don't believe anybody, any board has taken a formal position. I do believe you're the first elected body to hear the issue.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, yeah, just to follow up with Councilmember Spees's comment, we are not trying to decide public safety. That's clearly Chief Ray, in your, your purview. We don't, we do not envy that, that responsibility. And yeah, we're not looking to do that at all. It is all, it's, it's, it's somewhat simpler, but also more complex when you apply it, meaning that state code today just says, hey, either temporary or permanent. And that's all it says. And I, and I think our code, or your code, talks about permanent, but there's exceptions. And so this is, this is the, this distinction here, all we're talking about. And it's something that I, I would, following Mr. Hobbs's advice, be happy to move the item, but we're asking staff to take a look at this and work with CSD and, and CSD Fire on, on, on language, appropriate language that would be more appropriate for our community going forward.
All right. So if I can continue. I did have more questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all good. It's not like I haven't interrupted somebody before. It's no big deal. We're good. We're collaborative. So, so that kind of, what Councilman Sun had brought up is kind of where I'm going with it, is that there's, you have the state law, and then you have what, what we have as amended. It's, it's kind of close, actually. And that's kind of, to me, what's a bit disconcerting. I think it can be cleaned up in, to, I think it can be cleaned up to the way that the, that California has it. But again, I'm not, I'm not an expert in it. I would just like to go back, relook at it, have another conversation. And that's, that's where I am with it. So I'm happy to move along with the second. And but we, I think we got to iron this one out a little bit. And, but again, thank you very much. I have, I am not in any way trying to shape or form, trying to second-guess your opinion, your professionalism. And, and I want to thank you again for, on many things, not just on this issue, but on many things, standing up for what you believe is right relative to public safety. It's not always easy to sell somebody they can't have their party at a particular location when it's been done for years. And I think that stands to, to testament to your professionalism, so.
I make a lot of new friends every day.
Well, they told me if, if you enter public service and you want a friend, buy a dog. So that's whatever. I hope you have good dogs, my friend.
Well, we appreciate your service.
Along the same lines from Councilmember Spees, thank you again for your service to our community and keeping people safe. I know that that is your first and foremost priority. So thank you for all that you do. With that, I will, did I hear you, you made a motion, and we do have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our next item, 9.1.
An item 9.1 is receive a presentation regarding flood preparedness in the city of Elk Grove.
Hey, good to see you.
All right. Do we get started?
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Andrea Cortez, and I'm your real-time information center manager and your emergency preparedness coordinator.
And I'm Shai Barati, your engineering services manager in the Public Works Department.
And we're excited to bring you this presentation this evening. It's actually a California Department of Water Resources recognizes this week as Flood Preparedness Week, so this presentation is timely. And just briefly, we're going to highlight the purpose of this presentation. It's to provide a high-level overview of flood risk and mitigation efforts, review roles and responsibilities of the emergency management coordinator and the Public Works Department in a flood event, outline the city's plans, plans to prepare for, respond to, and recover from a flood event, and provide resources to stay connected and informed. For the roles and responsibilities, I know that many of you are probably familiar with this, but just as a quick review, for the emergency management coordinator side of things, a common thread theme you will hear throughout this presentation and is on many slides is communication and coordination. And that's, that is something that is pivotal in when dealing with emergency disasters, including a flood event. So we would activate and coordinate citywide and regional flood response plans. We would activate our incident command system. We would manage evacuation efforts, resource coordination, and coordinate recovery and repopulation efforts.
For the Public Works Department, we provide insight for local flood projections. Our operations and maintenance division team, they monitor storm events, they activate soundback locations. And we also inspect and maintain our infrastructure for drainage and the drainage system that we have, clearing debris, dredging channels and creeks. Also, we have six pump stations throughout the city that our ONM team, they inspect, test, and maintain on a monthly and quarterly basis.
For flood preparedness, a big component of that is public outreach. So throughout the year, as we have our regional safety days, preparedness is part of those conversations, not just specific to flood preparedness, but just disaster preparedness, having a go-bag, registering your phone number with SAC Alert to ensure that you're receiving emergency updates, and specifically including your address, so you can receive alerts specific to your area. We need to test those alert and warning notification systems. Sacramento County just recently went through this exercise last week when they did the Great California Shakeout, and that was a testing exercise. We need to understand our local risks, flood history, and associated response plans, and we need to exercise those response plans to identify any gaps or updates needed.
And we also have 688 storm pipe outfalls that are inspected and cleaned every year. We have 64 miles of roadside ditches, two and a half million, linear feet of storm pipes, 8,000 manholes, 14,000 inlets, that are all on a 10-year cycle. And every year, we inspect and maintain 10% of those. So within 10 years, everything inspected and cleaned. Additionally, we have creeks and channels that are dredged on as-needed bases on an annual program.
So what is flooding? This may seem like a silly question. However, there are different types of flooding events, and it's just important to reference this whenever we consider flooding that takes place across the nation in different circumstances that we see from across the nation, and how that may not be the same story here in Elk Grove based on our topography. So it's worth highlighting. Sacramento, the most common types of flooding in the Sacramento area are the river flooding, localized flooding, and flash flooding. And just for an educational piece, the types of alert and warning advisory, which is be aware, it means a hazardous, hazardous weather event is occurring imminent or likely. And these are through the National Weather Service. Watch, be prepared. It means a hazardous weather event has increased or significantly, has significantly increased, but the occurrence is still uncertain. And then warning, you should take action. The conditions pose a threat to life and property, and those in the path of the storm should take immediate action. And then here's just a fun visual. This is National Weather Services graphic. But it really highlights the importance, or the difference between watch and warning. And so it's a great graphic. Essentially, when you have a watch, you have the ingredients necessary for a significant weather event. However, whenever those ingredients come together, now you're in a full-blown warning, and you need to take action. Flood notifications, these are just highlighted as potential notification sources. We mainly receive our notifications and advisory warnings through the National Weather Service. You can receive notifications from California Office of Emergency Services for a very large-scale event. And then Sacramento County Office of Emergency Services and City of Elk Grove are the ones that would issue for our local area.
I want to quickly highlight our existing drainage system and the 13 different watersheds we have within our city boundaries and planning areas. Basically, the storms, the waters, the storm waters in Elk Grove, they drain from east to west and eventually end up in the Delta region. Laguna Creek watershed is our biggest watershed, and it expands all the way to the city of French Cordova limits, and includes portions of the unincorporated areas of the county. This watershed also includes our rural area, which you have roadside ditches and private ditches within parcels and people, basically in backyards and sideyards that eventually make their way into the Laguna Creek and out. But the rest of the city has a designed storm system where, with curb gutter inlets, storm drain pipes, and manholes. Elk Grove Creek basically is, the Elk Grove Creek watershed is in central Elk Grove area, goes from approximately ground line, and also it drains into Laguna Creek. Strawberry Creek watershed, this is on the north side of town, we have a small pump station for one basin that drains into the Strawberry Creek, but mostly just a partial area of the city drains into the Strawberry Creek. Laguna West Channel, it has, basically flows into the Beach Lake, and it's a gravity flow. The next three watersheds, Laguna West Lakes, Lakeside, Laguna Stone Lake, they all depend on a pump station system. They each have their own independent pump stations, and they're protected by a 100-year levee on the west side. And basically, whenever there's storm waters, they get drained via pumps into the Stone Lake area. Sheds A, Earhart Channel, Shed B, Franklin Creek, as well as Shed C, there are also gravity flow, they go into the Stone Lakes as well. We have Shed D, which is in our study area right now. We're studying this in, as part of our Storm Drain Master Plan Update Project that's ongoing right now. This also drains into the Stone Lake. We have a small watershed on the south side, on south of the town, Ground Line Channel. It's actually drained via pump station next to the golf course, and it goes into Deer Creek. And finally, we have the Deer Creek watershed. This one, basically, everything's south and/or east of Ground Line Road that goes into Deer Creek. With that, I'd like to talk about some of the flood risks that we have here in the city of Elk Grove. First, the 100-year floodplain map. So a 100-year flood is a flood event that has a 1% chance of exceedingly in any given year. It's not a flood that occurs once every 100 years. So I just want to make sure we all understand that definition, or the terminology.
Same one I was having, I mean, absorb it.
So a 100-year flood is a flood event that has a 1% chance of exceedingly in any given year, not a flood event that happens once every 100 year. And so this map is managed by FEMA. The flood emergent, the, sorry, I blanked out on FEMA, which is the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Thank you there. So basically, parcels in the blue are required to have flood insurance through the National Flood Insurance Program. Mostly, within our city, we don't have a lot of parcels. We have less than 1,000 actual insurance holders in the city. And the blue you see are mostly outside of the city boundaries. Next is the 200-year floodplain map. This is a floodplain map that actually, we're in the process of updating this map, something we're required by SB 5 that was passed for the urban level of flood protection. This map considers levee failures along the Sacramento River, East levee, as well as the Casamnes River on the south side. So as part of this, we are updating this map, we're using 2D modeling and updated topography to have a more accurate and detailed map. Also, I want to, you know, talk about the 200-year, 200-year flood is actually a flood event that has a half a percent chance of happening every year. So on this map, it's, looks a little bit scary. On the west side of town, we have those three watersheds that are shown to be inundated by floodwaters. I want to highlight some regional projects that are happening in our region to help alleviate or reduce this risk. First, we have the Sacramento Weir Widening Project that U.S. Army Corps of Engineers are working on. Their goal is to reduce Sacramento River, water surface elevations by a foot for a 200-year event. And this is expected to be completed in 2027. We have the Folsom Dam Auxiliary Spillway that was completed in 2017, and that was to achieve a 200-year level of protection. We also have the Folsom Dam Raise Project that's happening right now, and the goal is to raise the dam diex by two and a half feet and expect to be completed in 2028. And also, I want to highlight that Folsom Dam is operating under the FIRO, which is a Forecast and Reserve Reservoir Operations. The goal is to look at the forecast for atmospheric rivers and storm events and release water ahead of time to create capacity for floodwaters. Another flood, flood risk that we have is from the dam inundation map. We have two dams in our region that could impact City of Elk Grove. First is the Sly Park Dam from Jenkinson Lake on the east side of town. Any dam inundation would be a catastrophe. And this one, for, luckily for Elk Grove, is all going to be contained within the 100-year floodplain. On the northwest side of town, we have the Folsom Dam and the Folsom Reservoir. If, God forbid, something happens to the Folsom Dam, it's going to be a regional catastrophe, and that will be impacting us as well. But like I said, there are lots of projects in place and things that are happening that will, that are really reducing this risk. And this is very are really reducing this risk, and this is very unlikely to happen. So but it's a risk, but it's very unlikely to happen.
Now that we've reviewed the risk, part of preparedness is then making, having analysis about those risks. And an analysis was, a disaster analysis was done in 2023, and that's the graphic you're seeing there, based on the 200-year floodplain map. And it highlights evacuation routes for contraflow lane recommendations. And essentially, this is used as a tool that we would use contraflow as essentially a last-case resort. We would have, the thing with flooding is that you typically have time. So you have time for messaging, you have time for evacuation. But it starts those conversations, and this is why exercising is so important. We can get all stakeholders to the table, we can have the discussions of what would be needed, we can get to as much preplanning as we can, whether that looks like signal, timing, having those plans programmed and in place and ready to go with maybe some minor adjustments. Those conversations can take place. We also need to be aware of our resources and the locations throughout the region. We have the flood flight catches that are just south of the city, and we also have our flood operations decision support system through Sacramento County, so it allows us to know how many resources are available in real time. Flood monitoring. So in the event that we know that a weather event is coming, an atmospheric river, we will collaborate with city experts, such as Public Works, and other regional county partners, our fire partners, to determine a current status. We will review forecasted levels, and we will identify thresholds, planning the entire time, once those thresholds are met.
We also have six creek monitoring stations within the city of Elk Grove that we oversee. So elkgrove-onerain.com is the website where residents can go in and actually in real-time monitor rain, amount of rain that's coming accumulating, as well as the water surface levels in Laguna Creek, Elk Grove Creek, Earhart Channel, Franklin Creek, and Shed C. We also have the sacflood.org has, the county has multiple monitoring stations throughout the county and region. Additionally, we look at the National Weather Service, the NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administrative, as well as the California Nevada River Forecasting Center to see what the water level is going to be. They look at the amount of water that's going to be, the rains that's going to be coming, the storms that are going to come in, and then look at where that water is going to be, which rivers are going to be impacted, and what the river water surface elevation is going to be at what stage in a given 24-hour period or something like that in the future. So we use that information, we communicate that to our Emergency Operations Center.
And then we will identify local areas of risk and vulnerability, so what the weather event's going to bring specifically to our city, and then what it brings to the region. We will identify vulnerabilities and specific weather, specific needs related to the weather, if we need to activate activate sandbag locations, what resources we can stage in advance of the event. Those types of conversations will happen throughout the weather event.
And our operations and maintenance team, they will activate the storm patrol and field monitoring of all our levees, creeks, and channels. Will also shut down construction. All our inspectors will also assist and turn, basically turn into the storm patrol personnel. It will be kind of all hands on deck, and additional resources through contractors will be brought in as well as needed.
And so when we get into the actual flood response.
Again, yeah, we'll activate the Public Works hotline, which is 916-687-3005. It will be a 24-hour hotline, and we will be responding to service requests as they come in. And most of the service calls that we typically get during these storm events are related to wind with downed tree limbs and things like that. And our operations and maintenance team, they do a great job of actually making sure everything's clear ahead of time, ready for the storm, as well as if we need to have additional contractors added to our crew, then that can be done as well.
And if appropriate, we would activate the Emergency Operations Center if it's going to be a longstanding event or something that we feel can't be handled through coordination calls. That would be a step we would take, and we would receive situational update reports. We would continue to monitor and ensure that we have a successful deployment of resources. Flood recovery. So once we are through the weather event, essentially, the recovery though starts right when the weather event starts. We will start preparing for the documentation needed that will that will be needed for potential reimbursement. As evacuation orders are lifted, we will continue continuously provide communication through that emergency alert system through SAC Alert. And it's very important that people register for that because that's going to be the accurate place to find information. It's not recommended to find it through social media channels unless it's a verified social media platform. So that's that's very important for the SAC Alert. Continuing messaging on the recovery resources, any wraparound services we can provide as we repopulate an area. And then we will deactivate the EOC or DOC when appropriate, but flood recovery will likely continue long after deactivation. And then these are the resources that were mentioned throughout. We are actively building out the City of Elk Grove Emergency Preparedness website, so please stay tuned for more links there, some mapping that will show floodplanes, resources available, and we look forward to that. We have sandbag locations, and then we are going to link to the Sacramento Ready website and just make it a little bit more easy to navigate because that Sacramento website's very comprehensive, and so it can be sometimes a little bit challenging to navigate, so we will make those links quickly accessible for them. And that concludes our presentation. We are available for questions.
All right. Thank you for that excellent, excellent presentation. At this time, I will go ahead and open public comment opportunity. I do not have anyone sign up to speak. I will close public comment. Open it up to questions. I'll start to the right this time.
Sounds good. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I think, well, not only is this just a good time because of where it is in the calendar, but I think there was an ask, you know, a couple of months back, after the Texas flood, right? There were a few residents that were concerned about it. So thanks for, thanks for providing this presentation, and I hope that those residents are watching and see and understand. And I, you know, the Texas floods were, in those instances, what'd you call it? Not expect, they were completely unexpected, right? And so, you know, folks said, well, hang on, can this happen here, right? And so, well, you know, yeah, I mean, there's always 0.5%, right? That can happen, the 200-year floodplain and everything. And so I, I want to thank you very much for alleviating that. A couple of things. So first, though, so thank you, Ms. Cortez. I really appreciate it. I really enjoy hearing about how things are, you know, to take place to be managed in the event of an incident. And so, Mr. Arari, I want to say first, every time I talk to you about this topic, or about water, or about drainage, your excitement and your professionalism just shines right through, man. I can feel it. It's like you, like you just love this topic, and you love to talk about it. And so I, I really appreciate that exuberance because, because I know that you're paying attention, you're in it, right? So I do have a question. It's a bit of a backup from this. It was, it was a question that came in on a green sheet, I think. But I'll, instead of reading the green sheet, I'll just ask. And it's more towards the public works side, as, or maybe even community services development. When we're planning for homes, and I'll just say, non-permeable surfaces, driveways, asphalt, whatever, how do we, or how do we plan for that impact, as well as how do we plan for the impact of folks who extend their driveways out unpermitted, right? How do we plan for that? And I mean, does that have some appreciable impact on our, on the calculations in terms of our flooding in the streets? So if you could help me out with that one.
I can respond or?
All right, take it. So as new development is being planned, we go through various rounds of drainage study, review, and planning. There are certain calculations that do go into that, which the engineers in the room can talk about ad nauseam, as you note, with great excitement.
But it's okay. I love it because they're excited.
They are excited. Yeah. So there are, to the point, though, there are assumptions on the level of pervious and impervious surface that occurs with that development. This includes roads, this includes the building house structure itself, driveways, and other sort of accessory improvements that would occur, be it everything from a shed or a place structure to anything else. Based upon those calculations is how then the infrastructure within the subdivision or within the neighborhood is sized. We then reflect those assumptions or the underpinnings of those assumptions in our development regulations, where we limit the amount of impervious surface that's allowed to occur across the front of the home, across the back of the home, or the totality of the lot, and then the total buildable area that occurs. And there's a number of different metrics that we use in the zoning code in order to do this. So folks are supposed to align to those provisions as best as we can. A lot of the work, though, that goes into that is concrete with patios and other things, which don't require in and of themselves a building permit. And so it ends up becoming a code enforcement issue based upon neighbors calling in and complaining about other neighbors. We typically have this where someone will pave their entire front yard and now start parking across the entire width of the lot. Well, you've now increased your driveway area, you've got access coming in from public right-of-way that shouldn't be there. And so those become code cases, and between the code enforcement team in partnership with Public Works, who would then go through those and do those enforcements and ask people to remove the excess concrete, would also do an inspection to see is there something else going on with the lot, typically in the backyard, or maybe you've done something. We do also try to review in cases where those building permits do come in, like we'll say a pool, and people are putting in a large deck area around it, making sure that those calculations are right. And so our planning team does those reviews when those building permits do happen to make sure we're meeting those standards.
Okay. And so there are instances where we have chosen to deny applications based upon the percentage.
Absolutely. There are many cases where we deny those projects where building, excuse me, where a building permit is required, and there are a multitude of cases where a code enforcement case has been opened, and someone has been required under our standards to remove the excess pavement or excess improved surface area in order to return it to the appropriate condition.
Okay. Thank you very much. And again, thank you very much to the both of you, and I hope that those who wanted to have the update are listening and will ask, I'll definitely let them know to watch the recorded. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brewer, any questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So when we do have an incident that takes place, when we set up our incident command team, is it concentrated just locally within the city of Elk Grove and with fire initially? Or it doesn't involve the county in some way, shape, or form based on where the actual flooding or threat of flood is taking place? Because when we get the, when we read the forecasts of an atmospheric river coming our way to this region, we always want to make sure we're well-prepared. But as we saw in 2022, 2023, it was that river, that atmospheric river took up a large swath of territory, Nolly and Elk Grove, and Wilton as well. And so as we set up a team, do we set, do we set it up with just us, the city of Elk Grove in mind, or do we expand the net and make it more county or regional? That way, we're making sure that, we're making sure that every corner is being addressed, or when something happens, we're, we have the people in the room ready to address the situation regardless of, say, county, federal, state, even like, say, SMMUD being in the room for the electric, for the electricity? Because as we saw, a lot of transmission lines were affected, and to a large extent, obviously PG&E, based on their transmission lines and their gas lines.
So any event that would take, any weather event that would take place in Elk Grove, we are always connected with the county. They're aware of what we're doing, we're leaning on, if it's after hours, they have a 24/7 duty officer line, and so we will always be connected with them because, to your point, we are not isolated, or we're operating in a vacuum here. So we need to be aware of what what other risks may be, what other, what other partners are doing. We may need to queue up some resources potentially, let them know exactly what we're dealing with, what our field units are saying, and relay all of that. So there's never an instance related to emergency management or a weather event where we would just solely be a small, just local teams responding. We will always be connected with the county.
And this only, this only occurs in the event of a major system coming through, not something where there's, where there's rain in the forecast, like for example, this weekend. We're not planning for anything of that smaller size. We're only looking at, based on what the forecast is looking, we're getting a large current coming through, and it looks to be a large atmospheric river that is going to cover at least not just California, but also Oregon and Nevada and stuff like that.
Right. For localized events, or smaller events where we just expect localized flooding, we will put out some information on our social media pages as far as like be prepared for, you know, the potential local, the potential of localized flooding. We will offer sandbag locations, and then, and the Real Time Center, we're very closely connected with Public Works, we're having coordination calls. And so for smaller events, that's typically how we triage that. For anything where the National Weather Service is forecasting a significant event, that's when we typically start talking with the county, and sometimes that looks upwards of seven days in advance. We're starting those conversations, we're trying to see if we need to allocate some staffing, just on standby in the event that this, the forecast shifts, or to be up to date with what the current models are saying.
And for the public awareness, do we have some sort of like opt-in system that people from the, that public can sign up on, either on the city website or something that where they can immediately type in their address or cell phone information so they can receive the alerts as they come?
So through SAC Alert, when they register their address, they will receive emergency messaging, and sometimes that is just the advisories. They, we have links to the National Weather Service, so you can type in your zip code and see if you're under a watch advisory warning. And then for anything significant, we are going to push that through all of our social media channels, in addition to any mass alerting that needs to happen.
Good deal. No, I really enjoyed this report. It definitely shows that we're, that we're on top of things and making sure that the public is aware as much as humanly possible. And so I'm hopeful, hopeful that people will go back and see this and use what information that is being offered on here, and that the resources that are on the screen right now is something that people can actually apply to help them be better prepared. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll keep my comments very brief, but just thank you, super informative, understand contingencies, and definitely feel safe that you guys are leading this. I think all of Elk Grove should feel safe. You guys have thoroughly planned all of this out, and this is what's needed. We're in great hands because you guys planned this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sue.
Thank you, Mayor. Definitely proud of what we have here. It was fantastic to see that, how organized and every, we are, and I hope the residents at home can feel safe too, knowing this. Just a couple of questions in regards to the EOC. Is it still City Hall? Is that, is that, if you were to activate?
Yes, that is still the main identified location, assuming that it wasn't compromised for some reason. We could, in theory, do a virtual EOC if we still had connectivity, but it's best to have folks in the room if we can.
Yeah, absolutely agree. Yep, thank you. And then for you, Shoab, for the west side, so that is in the 200-year floodplain. If I recall, we did, we looked at it a few years back, no, no threat of underseepage or throughseepage, but overtopping, right? So that levee system, if you could pull back up that slide again, that, yeah, go forward, go forward one more. Oh, sorry, one more?
This one?
No, one more, sorry. It showed the levees on. Go forward. No, there's one that showed the yellow on that.
Maybe it's the disaster.
Yep, there you go, right there, yep. So we need to raise that a few feet, right?
Yes, it's, I'm understanding that right now, the levees are, there's no issues structurally with the levees itself. The only concern for a 200-year certification is that they're not high enough for a wave action. The levees need to be raised by three and a half feet. We did apply for a grant through FEMA. Unfortunately, we didn't get the grant. Mostly, you know, on a FEMA federal government side, the focus is more on a 100-year level of protection and not so much for a 200-year. So that's where we are right now.
Yep. And so then, are we, maybe it's to Mr. Warner, is this in our CIP to do this work? Because I would like to see our, the rest of our community having 200-year level of protection.
Yeah, we don't have a specific project in the CIP right now, most largely because it's unfunded. There's a city council priority project, it remains on that list, and we remain diligent in looking for opportunities to fund such a project.
Okay, thank you. Yep. Definitely need to keep looking for the money there. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Great questions and comments from my colleagues. I really appreciate the coordination with Arctic and our Public Works. I think that's phenomenal in keeping our community safe, to the extent that I'm fairly certain there's, you know, we're not, there's not a ton of people watching this right now. Sad to say, but it's reality. How do we get this information to our community? Can we include a link, some sort of synopsis of today's meeting, and then go to the website with the link for more information? I do think it's very important, and I would love to get this in the hands of many residents. So I'll leave it to the experts to figure out how to do that. Thank you, Kristin. All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, why are we talking? Don't make me do this. Don't make me do this. No cheers and jeers. All right, next item, 9.2.
9.2 is to receive a presentation and provide direction on shelter siting criteria for the permanent homeless shelter.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Sarah Von Trager, your Housing and Public Services Manager. Back again to talk to you about the shelter project. We are moving very quickly with this project. You all may remember, but in case we have folks watching, I'll do a little refresher. Our shelter lease expires in September of 2028. So we started planning for our permanent shelter in July, working with NJA Architecture. We wrapped up Phase One, the conceptual planning, and are now on to Phase Two, our siting criteria. So the shelter that we're planning is a low-barrier shelter that's pet and partner friendly. Currently, the conceptual plan has 20 beds, regular beds for folks and five emergency beds for adults, along with four family units that can be combined to serve larger families. We have a commercial kitchen in it and looking at office space for case management, trauma-informed design, really a next-level shelter. We have gotten to the point where we now need to start thinking about sites and where the shelter goes. And so we started at the staff level with about 130 sites, narrowed that to about 20 sites, and now are at the point where we are down to 10 sites that we are doing feasibility analysis on and test fits to see how a shelter would fit on those sites. Our goal is to release four sites in January for a public comment. So we started our community engagement with Phase Two with an online survey on site criteria and priorities. We need this information so that we can decide which of the sites that we want to advance. So the survey was available for about three weeks, September 29th to October 17th. And that was the first of our Phase Two engagement. The rest of it will follow likely in January when we actually release the four sites. So our community survey gave us some, some really great feedback. We had 655 people take the survey, which is really quite good for, for a survey. Most of the respondents were Elk Grove residents. We had pretty relatively equal representation from our three zip codes and not a lot of people from other zip codes, which would indicate they're probably not Elk Grove residents taking the survey. So we surveyed people on five categories. They had a total of 10 points that they could allocate to these five categories in terms of their importance. So someone could have said, I want all 10 points to go towards this one factor and no points to go to any of the other factors, or they could have distributed them equally or anywhere in between. So overall, 46% of people said that they wanted the shelter loc, or 46% of the points were allocated to sensitive uses, meaning that people wanted the shelter located an appropriate distance from homes, schools, daycares, and other sensitive uses. Aside from that factor, we saw the other factors fall more, more or less close together. Cost and feasibility, proximity to services, safety and security, transportation, all received between 10% and 18% of the points. We also gave folks an opportunity in the survey to provide comments, free-form comments. And so when we looked at how we would categorize those comments, we had a lot of folks mentioning safety and security considerations. Interestingly, though, safety and security did not get a huge percentage of the points. We had a lot of people expressing location preferences. Mainly, that was either, don't build the shelter at all, or don't locate it near homes. A lot of folks commented on program design and rules. We had really strong support for a pet-friendly shelter. A lot of folks wanted to make sure that we were going to allow pets. Lot of requests for vetting of guests and emphasis on mental health and addiction treatment. So these are just a couple of examples of positive and negative feedback that were, that were representative of what we received. First one, supporting building a permanent homeless shelter and providing additional resources. The second one, common, you know, rather not have a homeless shelter in the city. You know, the concern that building a shelter would invite more folks experiencing homelessness from other jurisdictions into our community was really common in the comments and indicates that we have a lot of education still to do to help folks understand the way that our shelter operates and the population that it serves, which is people who are already here in our community, who have lived here before, who became homeless in our community. We got a lot of questions. Again, this speaks to still, there's some education to do. We have most of these questions answered on our Frequently Asked Questions. So I would encourage, you know, folks who want to know more about the shelter to visit that Frequently Asked Questions page. But we will be using this to guide some of our future social media efforts to make sure that we, we really do get the word out there as well as possible about the answers to some of these questions. So what we are proposing and want to get council feedback on tonight is how you all feel about the allocation of points or percentage weight in these scoring criteria. So I will show you a graphic at the end that, that indicates, you know, how we plan to score the sites or evaluate the sites. Sensitive uses, obviously, the goal there is to avoid conflict with, with those sensitive uses. Cost and feasibility, we plan to look at the affordability to purchase the site, to build the shelter, to maintain it on that site over time, the way that the site can be laid out and the timeline to construct that. Proximity to services is really looking at how close the site is to jobs. We are finding that many of the folks in our current shelter want to work. And so having jobs that they can get nearby the shelter may be helpful in getting them income to get rehoused. Also, proximity to services, healthcare, supportive services, mental health are really important at getting our folks on the pathway to stable housing. And then we have, most of our folks receive at least CalFresh, the food benefit, and so have some funds to spend at retail stores, pharmacies, et cetera. Safety and security, on this measure, we want to look at how we would keep the shelter safe. So looking at whether we could get a site layout that enhances the visibility for our partners like police and fire and also their ability to reach the site quickly in the event of an emergency. And then transportation was the factor folks ranked the lowest by a little bit. That factor will look at access to public transit, how easy it is for folks to walk from the shelter to other locations and how easy it would be for them to bike. And so this graphic, we are still working on this. This is a bit of a preliminary draft. But what we're hoping to do with this information is rank each of the factors. You see on the right here on sort of a red, yellow, green. Green would be it, you know, for sensitive uses, green would be the site is further from homes, schools, daycares, parks, et cetera. Yellow would be it's, it's kind of somewhere in the middle when we're looking at the sites. And red would be it's really in close proximity to those uses. So using that classification, we would rank all of these factors and then kind of summarize it into an overall score for that factor. So sensitive uses would get a score, cost and feasibility would get a score, and then sort of use that to evaluate the site. What you see here on the left is the relative importance of those factors. So you can see sensitive uses is a larger circle, larger text that is, that represents the 46% of points allocation. And, you know, on the other end, transportation is much smaller, representing that the folks who took the survey felt that was less of a priority. So. Want to get some council feedback on this strategy, if you feel like those, those percentage allocations are correct or roughly, roughly in the right range. And then what we will do with that information is we will continue working with NJA on the test fits for the site and evaluating each site on those metrics. And then use that to winnow the sites down to four sites that we release to the public. And we do plan to share the, the information on each of the sites and the scoring or the evaluation factors with the public to help them see how the sites compare. That's what I've got. I'm happy to answer questions.
All right. Excellent presentation. I will go ahead and open up public comment. I do not have anyone sign up. I'll close public comment. Questions, comments? I'll start to the left this time. Councilmember Suen?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sarah, for this presentation. I think our community got it right. I think the, I feel similarly on, as far as these categories that you have laid out. So you're emphasizing, as you, as you listed here, is there a certain percentage, that weighted percentage that you have assigned or is that, how are you, I see it's bigger in the, you know.
So we, you know, we are, we are not assigning a numerical score to sites, but we're kind of comparing the sites to one another relative to each other. So a site that's further from homes or residential or other sensitive uses would, would get a green. One that's right abutting it would get a red. And then kind of, kind of looking at it on that, that basis, rather than a strict, like, assigning a score, which can lead to, you know, it leads to some challenges in that, you know, one site might be, you know, 1,000 square feet or 1,000 feet from residential. Another one might be 975. You know, those are about the same, right? We want to make sure that we're, we're not creating a scoring system that's too restrictive.
I see. And then in terms of cost, is, how do you evaluate that when you don't have, you know, a design, a concept for? Each site's unique, right? So you won't have that information.
Yeah, so we have been really fortunate. NJA, our partner, does have a civil engineering firm onboard as well. They have some experience estimating costs through other shelters that they have designed. And the civil engineering firm that they're working with, partnered with, has some experience estimating costs associated with the, the sites themselves and the cost it would cost to bring utilities onto the site, that sort of thing. And so we do expect to get a rough cost estimate for each of, each of the 10 sites that we are having them look at more closely.
Okay. So you will be doing sort of a conceptual design on each one?
Yes, yes. So what, what we hope to release in January for each site is the score, the evaluation metric with the red, yellow, green and kind of the overall summation there, as well as a conceptual design and how it would fit on the site so that folks could see, you know, how, how close it would be to the street perhaps. Not a firm design, right? That obviously takes more time and more money. But at least a concept that would let folks see how that would fit on the site and integrate with the surrounding area.
Okay. And then finally, for the intake, are, are you going to go through, when are you going to go through that criteria? And just when people who are coming into the shelter that?
Yes. So we anticipate for this shelter using essentially the same process that we use right now, which is vetting by our navigation team. So everyone who goes into the shelter right now into a regular bed meets with one of our homeless navigators who verifies their connection to Elk Grove. And we also, of course, run the check to make sure that they are not a sex offender or have other, other disqualifying factors.
Got it. Good reminders. All right. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For your response from the community, Sarah, has there been a lot of people just super engaged in this process?
We have, we have had some folks that have been really engaged throughout this process. We've had a lot of positive feedback about the conceptual plan. In particular, a lot of folks really liked the renderings that the architect shared with you the last time we were here. Folks feel like the shelter's going to be welcoming and, and different than what their image of a shelter was coming in to the meetings.
Throughout this process, has it been more educational?
I think yes. There is still, though, a lot of education to do with our public. I think that one of the things we hope to do between now and January is continue that education with a series of videos and some social media content aimed at really getting folks ready to see this. But we know that there are, there are also folks who will not hear about this until they get, you know, a postcard in the mail about the meetings and the sites. And so we're, we're prepared to do education at all points of the process. We've learned a lot from the community engagement that we did around the Enhanced Winter Sanctuary and then around the year, the year-round shelter that we have right now. And so we're going to be building off of that to design our community meetings and also the content leading up to.
Perfect. And then just as the architectural structure, it's, within that, you're going to be focusing on healing wellness and recovery, correct?
Yes, a very trauma-informed design that will allow folks to have a little bit more privacy than our current shelter is set up to allow.
Perfect. Okay. That's another question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brewer?
As a, as a carryover of Vice Mayor Robles's questions, will the dimensions of the, of the, based on the architectural drawings that you're sharing with the public, where are the takeaways that the public are, are responding to positively, based on the renderings? Is it the light? Is it the, the positioning of, of the facility? Or is it the separation of rooms where families have their own space compared to individuals? What are some of the takeaways that people are resonating with?
Two, two big takeaways, the separate family spaces and the family, the inclusion of family spaces at all. Folks are really glad about that. As you know, our current shelter does not accommodate families. And so that will be something, something new. A couple of other things folks really like is the way that, that we plan to incorporate pets and space for pets into the individual bedding areas. Currently, at our shelter, folks can leave their pet in a crate in their area. We'd like to incorporate that more permanently into the design so that pets can stay near their owners, like they do in our current shelter, as opposed to some shelters where there's an outdoor area or kennel where you have to leave your pet. The other thing our community seems really excited about is the commercial kitchen. One of the things that we've had, when we had a nonprofit, Elk Grove Heart, managing an overnight shelter, was the ability for organizations to cook food and then share that food with the guests. And in our current shelter, we don't have cooking facilities. And so a lot of folks are really excited about having a commercial kitchen where they and their, their community group or faith-based group can come in and actually prepare a meal and possibly incorporate the guests in that process.
That's good to hear. That's, that's really good to hear as we're, as we're, as we're putting together a concept. I mean, it's, it's definitely important that the public feels that it's something that they can be engaged with, but also show that it's positive, it's, it's, it's based on healing and getting back on track. But it, and it shows that in every, in every angle, every wall that is, that is, that is on the facility because I think some people have a visual that it's going to be walls, limited windows, cold. You want it to be as warm and inviting as possible, just to give the, the individual and the families that are going to be there, give, just really inspiring and bring us in some hope. But thank you.
Councilmember Spies?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I think the only tweak that I see on it is that, as we're, could you go back to the stoplight chart? The, please? The, so the, the challenge or the question, something I'd like to suggest, I suppose, is one small tweak and that's relative to, okay, so as a function of moving things away from sensitive uses moves the location likely to less dense locations, right? That's the, that's the likelihood. I guess, so my concern and I, is safety and security. And should that come up one more level? That's all I'm thinking about relative to it because, again, if it is not in a dense area, which is, that's fine. I, I'm concerned about accessibility. which is, that's fine, um, I, I'm concerned about accessibility and proximity to, um, to safety services, be it fire or be it, or, or police. I just, I wanna be sure that somebody can get, uh, somebody can get assistance there, um, in a, in a quick time, right? So that's kind of where I think.
So you're suggesting on the sample criteria, taking the safety and security and moving it up to, are you replacing?
I would say put it on equal, equal footing with cost feasibility and proximity to services. I just, I'd put it on an equal footing. Because, I, I mean, hey, safety and security, it, it's a concern, should be. That's all I'm saying. Just put it on equal footing.
Um, yeah, I mean, I could, I could support that. I, I think it's consistent with some of the community feedback already. I'm surprised transportation was so low.
It was. I was, I was surprised by it.
Um, and I think it's because of the lens. If you're an unhoused, you want access to transportation and services. So actually then that triggers the question. Did we get any of our residents at the shelter participate?
You know, it was an anonymous survey, so I can't say for sure whether we did or not.
Yeah, I mean, just having, I, I would think having access to services would be higher. But I, I can't imagine any location that, that doesn't address really all of these needs anyways. I imagine you're looking at this with a holistic lens and looking to address some of these components. Um, I would think so.
Yes, I think all of the locations, you know, we are looking at the design with an eye to the visibility aspect. We will certainly, um, so we did, we asked questions, but there are certain elements that will be universal across any location. One is, you know, we'll be working with our police department to make sure that the, uh, site design incorporates the crime prevention through environmental design or SEPTED principles. Um, we'll be working, obviously, with our fire department representatives to make sure that they have the emergency vehicle access that they need on the site. Um, so there, there is definitely a threshold standard that would apply to all sites.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay. And I think, you know, where the residents, when it comes to safety and security and the sensitive uses, I, I can't help but wonder if they're sort of, you know, we have them as separate categories, but I really also think from a lot of the residents that I've heard from, I am afraid of having shelters near my house for safety and security reasons. So there, it's like a big, long sentence. So I really do think that this, the sensitive uses probably does address a lot of the safety and security issue because it's usually part of one sentence that I've heard, at least from, from my perspective, and I think yours too.
That's fine. I, I.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just saying, like, I feel like they're one in, you know.
Sure. I mean, they, they were saying we want sensitive uses.
Yeah. And you don't, you don't want them near the schools and daycares because you're worried for safety and security. It's usually part of the same sentence that I've come across.
Yeah. And I, I go there with my, I, I, where I, the only reason that I push to it is relative, mostly to accessibility in the event that something happens, right? So I, I'm okay with it. I just wanted to bring it up. If that's, if nobody wants to move it, I'm, I'm good with that.
Um, yeah, I, I think I'm good for now. Um, and then as we look at the, the sites, I think we can go through this exercise one more time because that's really where a lot of this is gonna come up, is the site selection. And then we can do the deeper dive. So I'm happy with what you've presented. And the need is there. And I'm really proud of the work that we're doing. There was another great success story shared by the Gathering Inn of a couple that has now moved into employment and permanent housing. So they are doing great work and it just reinforces that the need is there. And we are seeing some successes coming out of there. So, uh, wishing all of them the best of luck. So thank you for your presentation. We will move on to our next item.
Item nine point three, which is receive a presentation except for filing the Elk Grove Tourism Marketing District annual report for fiscal year 2024-25.
Alrighty. Good evening, council, um, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm Sarah Rodriguez, your Economic Development Analyst here at the City of Elk Grove and also your proud Secretary of the Explore Elk Grove Board of Directors. So as a reminder, back in 2015, the city council took a forward-thinking step by forming the Elk Grove Tourism Marketing District and Nonprofit Owner Association, Visit Elk Grove, that does business, um, under the name Explore Elk Grove. The mission behind this collaboration continues to align perfectly with the council's vision of fostering a thriving local economy by creating events and experiences that enhance the quality of life for both our visitors and our residents. And since its inception, Explore Elk Grove has provided an annual update to the council, highlighting the key projects, um, and progress that they've done throughout the years. So I'm here to continue that tradition. Um, thank you all for your continued support of Explore Elk Grove on behalf of the board. And I want to introduce the Executive Director, Erin Vow, and Director of Marketing and Events, Casey Fabry.
Thank you, Sarah, and good evening, Madam Mayor and council and city staff. Uh, each year, Explore Elk Grove has a privilege of sharing and storytelling, celebrating the people in this community, places and experiences that make our city truly exceptional. I'm Erin Vow, the Executive Director, um, of our team at, at Explore Elk Grove, and it's a pleasure to serve this community. Um, our mission is simple yet powerful, to elevate Elk Grove's identity, drive economic impact and enhance quality of life by connecting residents and visitors to all that our community has to offer. Over the past year, our team has strengthened partnerships, expanded our marketing reach, and amplified Elk Grove's presence regionally, statewide and nationally. Together with all of you, city staff, our hotels, local businesses, restaurants, coffee shops, wineries, breweries, local producers and community partners, we've positioned Elk Grove as a place where creativity, culture and connection thrive. I'm gonna click through here and dive into a couple of items, um, that we wanted to share and showcase. Um, lodging and performance this year, um, was pretty strong. Overall, we had a seventy-eight point eight percent hotel occupancy throughout the community, a hundred and forty-two dollar average daily rate, a hundred and twelve dollar revenue per occupied room, and twenty-seven million, um, in guest room revenue, which, um, calculates to over three million dollars in transient occupancy tax that comes back to the general fund for the community. Um, there's a little bit of a new report that Tourism Economics, um, produces for the destinations that subscribe to their data, which we are one of two hundred. Um, it identifies and showcases how Elk Grove and the Sacramento region, with air travel, labor, some of our efforts through organic website sessions and direct sales efforts, um, brings us all up and how compares us to other communities and other destination marketing organizations like ourselves. So this is something new we wanted to share and showcase. Um, tourism continues to be a vital driver for Elk Grove, um, in our economy, contributing over a hundred million dollars in annual spend, um, supporting thousands of jobs annually as well. Um, you might wonder, like, who's coming to Elk Grove? How long are they staying? So here's some of the information about that. Um, on average, visitors are staying two point eight days. Um, eighty-one percent of them are staying over the night. The rest of them are driving in, um, for the day. Uh, sixty-four percent are repeat visitors. Um, on average, they're spending about nine million dollars, and again, annually about a hundred million. Um, the demographics, the household income is around eighty-six thousand dollars. Um, and then you can see the spread of age group and race. Um, our sales team does a lot of proactive efforts as far as uncovering new events for the community, um, whether they're regional, statewide or even national. And then also supporting events that are within the community. So of the twenty-three events that we uncovered and/or supported, we had forty-six thousand, um, estimated attendees and visitors from those twenty-three events, twenty-one thousand hotel room nights, twelve point two million direct business sales estimated, six hundred and ninety-nine thousand local tax generation, and about five thousand jobs supported. Um, some really key results that continue to grow year over year. Um, I have a little bit of a video that I want to show with you that the team put together. A lot of this goes to the marketing and content development team that put everything together to kind of do a whole roll, um, for a roll-up for the year.
Expect six, over six hundred swimmers out at the Elk Grove Aquatic Center. And this is all for the Bill Rose Classic Championship now.
Elk Grove has to offer, you know, and we want to be a big part of that, you know?
Yeah. And, and with the city growing the way it has, the options have obviously increased.
Definitely.
Part of the Elk Grove Local E-Gift Card Program.
In the past, we've had those Explore Elk Grove E certificates turned into students who have become students for a long term.
Instagram ads, we're, you know, sending emails, we're promoting and marketing, uh, like crazy. But that little extra push from another entity like Explore Elk Grove, it's awesome. It, it really, you really do feel support.
And that's a wrap on the video. Hope you enjoyed that. It's available on our YouTube as well. Um, but what you've seen is the power of partnership and purpose and action. Every campaign, every event and every collaboration truly contributes to the larger vision. Um, one where Elk Grove isn't just a place to live and work, but a place to visit, a place to experience and to connect and to return to. Um, so now I'm gonna turn it over to Casey Fabry, who's our Director of Marketing Events, who will share highlights from the past year showcasing how we continue to turn strategy into impact partnerships, uh, into opportunities and stories into inspiration. Casey?
Thank you, Erin, and good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. This past year has been one of growth, collaboration and momentum. Our marketing, public relations and strategic events continue to elevate Elk Grove's visibility and strengthen our community's tourism ecosystem. Our website saw a thirty-four percent increase in new users and also drove nineteen thousand referrals to partner websites, supporting local businesses directly. Social media continues to be a powerful engagement tool and our email newsletter also grows steadily each year, now reaching more than fifteen thousand subscribers. Beyond our own channels, strategic public relations efforts have helped position Elk Grove as a destination of choice. Proactive media pitching led to forty-eight earned stories, including features in Visit California, KCRA and the Sacramento Bee. As you saw in the video, the impact of earned media has been felt across the entire community. These stories represented thirty-two different partners and extended Elk Grove's reach, putting the city and its local businesses on the map. Building on this visibility, Explore Elk Grove continued driving excitement through signature events and community collaborations. Highlights included the SAC Brew Bike VIP Experience on Main Street, Diversity Dining Week with forty-two participating restaurants, and new Quarks and Caps events like the Hollow Wine Trail. Together, these events created memorable experiences and supported local businesses. Explore Elk Grove continues to lead the Support Local E-Gift Card Program, working alongside the City of Elk Grove and Chamber of Commerce. Over the past year, the program has driven more than nineteen thousand dollars in spending at local businesses with over one hundred eleven locations currently participating in the program. Beyond generating local spending through the E-Gift Card Program, Explore Elk Grove spotlighted participating businesses on social media. Nina, our Content Marketing Manager, um, personally visited forty-one businesses and created social media reels that share local stories and ensure our content is authentic and engaging. Finally, our partnership with Elk Grove High School's TDA Academy and the Civic Summer Internship Program gave students valuable hands-on marketing experience while nurturing pride for their hometown. Now, all of these achievements that we've shared this evening have set the stage for an exciting year ahead. July kicked off with our annual Tourism Brunch and two major sporting events, AJGA's first ever Elk Grove Junior Championship, and we also welcomed back Western Zones. September was filled with traditions and new experiences. Explore Elk Grove energized our culinary scene with Diversity Dining Week and showcased our vibrant breweries and wineries with events like the Sangria Showdown and Uncorked and Uncapped. To wrap up the month, Elk Grove was front and center at Visit Sacramento and Slow Food International's first ever Terra Madre Americas. Local chefs, coffee makers and producers shared their products with over one hundred sixty-five thousand attendees from across the globe. Looking ahead, we're excited for Hala Palooza this Friday and the Second Annual Hollow Wine Trail next weekend. Signature events and annual programs will return like Restaurant Week, Uncorked and Uncapped, and the AJGA Junior Championship in 2026. We remain focused on expanding Elk Grove's reach as an experience-driven, family-friendly destination. Through strong partnerships and compelling storytelling, we'll continue to attract visitors, inspire repeat travel and deliver value to residents and businesses alike. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Um, as we look ahead, Explore Elk Grove remains committed to advancing our shared goals, driving economic growth, supporting local business vitality and celebrating the people and stories that define our community. Elk Grove's story continues to unfold and together we're writing the next great chapter. Thank you. Any questions?
All right. Well, thank you. Excellent, uh, presentation. I will open up public comment, just in case. Nobody signed up to speak. I'll close it. Any questions, comments? Looking to the right. Any questions or comments?
I'll start out real quick. I really appreciate the presentation. Very good information. One thing I want to thank you, um, very much for is your support of, um, local service clubs, uh, local, uh, charity, not charities, but, um, nonprofits, um, the assistance that you're doing with the Strauss Festival to, you know, help elevate a fantastic. Strauss Festival to, you know, help elevate a fantastic, longtime, community. Performance is great. Things with Taste of Elk Grove and other things. I really appreciate that you've had the opportunity to help them elevate, elevate the game. So, thank you.
Thank you. It's our pleasure.
Councilmember Brewer, any questions?
No, I just want to thank you for the report and just keep up the good work on providing that presence and being out there in the community and just showing what Elk Grove is made of to the outside world. It's definitely attracting and getting eyes to it. Saw this really interesting stat that you may be happy to hear about. So I saw it last night on the news where Elk Grove and Roseville were considered as two of the most safest places for Halloween. And so that Trunkapalooza that's coming up is like perfect for that because now you're going to get a fresh new batch of kids from the region that are participating, and that just adds on to the work that Explore Elk Grove is showing and improving every day. So, thank you so much.
Vice Mayor, questions, comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Erin, I just want to say thank you for leading the forefront of this, especially making our city known and pop out even in the region. I think recently you also did a join, a joint, a join with Visit Sacramento and then Visit Rancho, correct? On sports?
Yeah, we are creating a coalition with Visit Sacramento, Visit Rancho Cordova, and hopefully Yolo County, Placer County Tourism, as well as some of the other regional destination marketing organizations to attract larger sporting events that aren't just solely going to affect one community, but multiple communities. We had the opportunity to go to Teams Conference in Ohio last week where we had our first 40 appointments with sports events rights holders and ones that we were really targeting to get in the community that's going to have events in Sacramento, Rancho, and Elk Grove, for example, like the USA Water Polo Junior Olympics, which will need about 30 poles within a 40-mile radius, pools like our Aquatic Center, and then also some senior games and some other opportunities. So it's nice to be having a much larger regional approach in the sports tourism market.
And do you see, that's going to be a big revenue generator, correct?
Yes, all those events would have multimillion dollars in economic impact for each of our communities.
And we saw that there was an up from 78%, correct? Last year. Has it increased that percentage that we talked about? I think it was for number of people sleeping in hotels?
The occupancy numbers are continuing to grow this year. Last year, they were a little bit steady from the prior year, but we are continuing to see the average daily room length grow every other day, and also the revenue per occupied room. So as we continue to fill those need dates, especially November through February, and identify events that will help fill some of those voids, we'll continue to generate guest room revenue and transient occupancy dollars for the community.
And then for, so that's TOT, correct?
Yes.
Have we, and maybe this is for discussion for a longer time, is there been any certain percentage, or have we not increased it, or even kind of revisited the TOT numbers?
TOT tax for the city that the city collects is 12%. And then Explore Elk Grove, which manages the Tourism Marketing District for the City of Elk Grove, we collect 4%, which was recently increased last July. And so that 4% is through the Tourism Marketing District.
And you're doing a lot with that 4%, correct?
We are. We, it's actually given us a huge boost in the activity that we can do to promote the community.
Well, thank you very much. And I know that Terra Madre just happened, and everyone saw the Elk Grove booth. That was the first thing you saw. There was lines out the door, literally for that one. People were getting a taste of Elk Grove, experiencing the coffee, and it was amazing to see that. Everyone from Sacramento was like, you guys are doing it different in Elk Grove. So it was awesome to see that. Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for visiting the 41 restaurants that we have in Elk Grove, making sure that folks are aware that we do have the best sushi, the best tacos, the best coffee shops that are hidden. So you're really elevating a lot of our local businesses, and we are super appreciative of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sun?
Thank you, Mayor. And I couldn't agree more with Vice Mayor said. Congratulations, Erin, Casey, and your entire team on these new stats that I heard about the Terra Madre. I wasn't able to go, but I heard that you pitched it to our city, and Daryl did a great job in making sure, advocating that we get behind you, and so glad we did. On that note, I also want to give Daryl a shout-out for bringing you onboard many, many years ago. It's been great. Every year, you're elevating things. You do better and better. And so we are really excited for what you've done so far and look forward to what you're doing, going to do in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Loved all the comments. My two cents on this, you know, you do tremendous work elevating our city, travel, tourism, destination, marketing. These are all things that lift up our local economy and bring new visitors here. So, great job. Continue, you know, excelling at what you're doing. Big fan, big supporter, obviously, as someone who's been in the hospitality industry for over a decade. I understand and really appreciate the work that you do. It does not go unnoticed, and the Terra Madre, you just knocked it out of the park.
Thank you. And thank you for the investment with Daryl and Invest Elk Grove in Sarah, because we couldn't have done it without that. And we look forward to 2027.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Have a good evening.
You too.
All right, so we, okay, just as, as welcome. Generally speaking, we don't do any applause, but I appreciate the enthusiasm.
Appreciate that, over rocks getting thrown, right?
Well, there is that. 9.4.
Out of 9.4 is to receive information on recommendations for enhancing city youth programs and engagement.
Congratulations, Femi, on your promotion, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Femi Omotesha, Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office. This staff report is for council to receive information on recommendations for enhancing city youth programs and engagement and provide direction as desired. Just to provide a little background, at their retreat in February this year, council directed staff to explore opportunities to enhance youth programs and engagement. Staff worked with the youth commissioners to gather preliminary insights and ideas. This presentation is an initial framework for discussion and direction. Staff will continue to develop these concepts with the commissioners. Currently, the city is already actively engage, engaging youth through several established programs. For example, the Youth Commission advises the city council. Civic Summer Internship provides hands-on experience in governance. And the Police Department has several programs that engage youth, such as the Explorer Program, the Youth Service Officers, and other community collaborative efforts. Also, the workforce development partners with EGUSD on college and career connections to shape curriculum and link students with business leaders. The recent Asphalt Art Contest is one of the ways youth are engaged in civic projects. So the initial recommendations we are making are in two parts. Firstly, we are focusing on demystifying government and engagement. We are proposing developing a video series to explain local government roles and participation pathways. Also promoting opportunity to earn community service hours through city-sponsored events and civic participation. The last part for this one is organizing regular youth council forum or youth and council forum or mayoral council attendance at youth commission meetings for direct communication. Of course, we are going to be, take cognizance of the Brown Act while planning such interactions so that we don't do anything wrong. Also explore formal in-class local government career presentation with schools. And then the second part of the initiative is focused on enhancing the current initiatives that we have right now. We are proposing launching a targeted campaign, such as maybe school presentations, social media testimonials, to raise the awareness about the commission, what it does, and how to apply. Then empower the commission to expand its social media presence with support from public affairs staff to create engaging, peer-to-staying content. We are also proposing the exploring, offering a financial scholarship, possibly $500 per intern for up to 50 interns yearly for the Civic Summer Internship, to broaden appeal and professionalize the experience. There are no immediate physical impacts with accepting this report. The internship financial scholarship is the only financially significant item proposed, and of course, general staff time required for all initiatives. Staff recommends that council receive this information from staff on initial recommendation for enhancing city youth program and engagement. Council receives, provides direction as desired for staff to continue developing these and additional initiatives. That's the conclusion of my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Femi. At this time, I'll open up public comment. I do not have anyone sign up. I'll close public comment. Anybody have questions on the left or comments?
Oh, just thank you, Femi, for the information. I think investing in our youth, this is another great way. I like the idea of the financial scholarship consideration, so appreciate.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am in agreement with Councilwoman Sun.
Anyone on the right, questions, comments? Yep, go for it. Councilmember?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Real quick, thank you, Dr. Femi. I appreciate the presentation, as always. I think this is an item that came out of, you know, our last retreat when we all, you know, had reflected and said, you know, there's more that we can do to help out our youth. And again, I know I'm speaking to the choir, everybody knows this here because we've talked about it before, but it bears repeating that there are cities, not just close to us, but across the United States, that are wishing that they could do something more for their youth, but are trying to balance the budget to pay for employees, right? So I just want to say that, you know, with Measure E, I thank you very much to the residents. It provides us an opportunity to invest in our youth. I want to thank staff very much for coming up with creative ways to do that. I hope that we can, you know, keep our minds open to things in the future. I would definitely support all of those and what I would suggest relative to the scholarships. There are participants in this, is it the summer program? That's the name of the summer program?
Civic Summer.
Civic Summer, okay. There are participants, there are corporate participants in the Civic Summer that we would probably need to reach out to and ask them if they would be willing to support that $500. So I guess we just ask them first and then see what we can do. I would hate to lose opportunity, I would hate to lose companies that are part of the program for that, but I'm sure there's something that, some way we can come up to solve that, right? But great stuff. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Femi, and thanks to the rest of staff that have been working on this.
Councilmember Brewer, any questions, comments?
No, I really liked the presentation, and especially the recommendations to help, help enhance promotion of the Youth Commission and the Community Service Hour incentives for civic participation. I really like those because that can help engage more, more youth, especially from the middle school and the high school levels, because as we've seen with our current teen, the Youth Commission, we actually have like youth in middle school levels participating, and that's awesome because it really gets the juices flowing for involvement, for community involvement, and looking for ways to help bring a new set of eyes and bring in new bodies to the Youth Commission is always welcome, especially when we have a lot of juniors and seniors that apply, but every now and then you get that seventh grader, that eighth grader, that ninth grader that participates, and that really is good for the process and is good for our community. So I really like a lot of these efforts, the scholarship. Again, this is a really good, this is a really good endeavor for us to walk down, especially in getting teens involved, whether they're in Civic Summer or the Youth Commission or another youth organization that is affiliated with EGUSD. And it's really good, it's all good in getting, in getting the youth involved and getting them hands-on training, building skills and developing self-esteem. So I love all of that. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Femi, for all the great work that you're doing. An investment in our youth is an investment in our future. So, thank you, appreciate all the work. It was, you know, they, our students brought up mental health being a big concern, so I'd love to see what unfolds over the next year as we tackle on a big issue that's impacting our youth, and it's something that they are interested in proactively. So, looking forward to continued success coming from our commission and all the great work that's happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, 9.5.
To consider appointment of one voting member to the Historic Preservation Committee and possible appointment of an alternate member. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Jason Lindgren, your City Clerk. We opened this recruitment for a vacancy that occurred at the beginning of September. The Historic Preservation Committee has a unique construction in that we have five members, but two alternate members, and our alternates always have that opportunity to step into a voting seat if they are so appointed. If that does happen, we do have a new applicant that would have the possibility to also be appointed, whether voting member or alternate, but I'll let any of the applicants that are here in attendance tonight speak to their, on their behalf, and take it from there.
All right, thank you. I'll go ahead and open up public comment opportunity. We have one speaker, John Fraser.
We're almost home. We're almost there. Yeah, we're there. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, it's great to see you. My name is John Fraser, and I'm an applicant for the vacancy on the Historic Preservation Committee. It's been my great pleasure to serve on the committee since July of last year, and I'm now the senior alternate. It is a remarkable group of people, and I would be honored to continue to serve with them as a voting member. I have worked in preservation my entire career, first as a historian with California State Parks, working across the state to preserve its diverse and rich cultural heritage. Since 2019, I've been the District Superintendent of the California State Parks Capital District, which includes Old Sacramento State Historic Park, Sutter's Fort, the California State Railroad Museum, the California State Capitol Museum, the California State Indian Museum, and the Leland Stanford Mansion. I am excited about the prospect of informing the continued preservation and activation of historic Elk Grove, and believe strongly historic districts are best cared for when they're part of vibrant, commercially viable spaces. Thank you for the time to speak this evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And that is our final speaker, so I will close public comment. And I would like to nominate John Fraser to fill the vacancy. Comes highly recommended from your colleagues, so that is my nomination.
Absolutely.
We're good? All right. Congratulations.
Hard to have you.
Thank you for continuing to serve.
Yeah, congratulations.
All right, next item is our Council Comment Reports.
Before we go too far, Mayor, what you would have as an option is that with Mr. Fraser stepping up from being an alternate, we do have now a vacancy.
Oh, that's right.
For an alternate position. One of your alternates is already an alternate, and we just have one other application.
All right, well, then let's appoint Rachel Lee Perez as an alternate.
And there we are. Thank you.
There we are. All right, excellent. Thank you. We'll start to the right. Any comments, reports, future agenda items?
Laboratory, Laboratory Board tomorrow. That's about it. Thank you.
Same, Rod?
Same as Councilmember Spies.
Vice Mayor, anything?
Had a sewer meeting today, Madam Mayor, and then also was appointed on the League of Cities Executive Board for the Latino Caucus, so I'll be representing Elk Grove there.
Good job.
Awesome. Similarly, appointed to the Board of API Caucus at League of Cities, and sexier meeting earlier today as well. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So at the League of Cities, it was a great pleasure to serve on a panel with our city manager showcasing good governance. on a panel with our city manager, showcasing good governance in our state, and we are really seen as a model city, so that just obviously makes me really proud of the great work that's taking place here. So I just got to showcase all the great work that's happening, so thank you to our city staff for making our job easy.
Great work on the panel, Mayor and City Manager, Jason Beerman. You guys represented us well.
I cannot underscore the comments that came from many colleagues from statewide about dysfunctional city councils. And I got to just really boast about how fabulous we all work together, we respect each other, most importantly, we listen to each other. We may not always agree, but we all have each other's back, but most importantly, we have our city's back and our residents. So I just thank you all for all that you do for our city. STA and SACRT Subcommittee. And then next week, actually, is the first kickoff, is the County-City Collaboration on Homelessness Services and Behavioral Health. I will be one of, I'll be the one representing the city. It's a county, and all of our cities participating in this effort, so more to report on that at the next meeting. With that, if my mom is watching, happy birthday. I'm on my way home.
Happy birthday.
And thank you. We will adjourn the meeting at 9:11.